Sorry about that.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Human Services Committee to order. If the clerk will take the role, please.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner McCall.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Chair Beaton.
Present.
You gotta get the mics closed so they don't pick up as well as our other ones.
If everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make motion we approve the revised agenda?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens wishing to be heard? Do you want to start, Jay?
You know, actually, what I was just thinking is, can I run through some? And then take a little breather and maybe if you have some.
Yeah, that's a good idea. You gotta get close to.
Yeah. Okay, bear with me. I'm gonna do a lot of reading here, so. These are communications that have been received at the Board of Commissioners, to the Board of Commissioners, in regard to some topics, and I'm gonna attempt to read through them in their entirety, and I think there's gonna be a clock on me. The first one is from Sue Rukowski from Fort Grashen. I'm in full support of Dr. Merkantant and her team at the St. Clair County Health Department. Dr. Merkantant has followed the science in regard to mask-wearing and vaccines. She has done an exemplary job during this difficult time. This is from Deborah Roberts RN. I'm asking that you continue to support Dr. Merkantant and the decision she makes for the health of our county citizens. Please vote against any kind of discipline against her. Her decision to mandate mask-wearing in schools is intended to keep children in school while causing the least amount of harm. Her decision is within her scope of practice as Director of Public Health and is based on sound research and practices. This is a prudent decision to protect the greatest majority of citizens in our county from becoming sick and dying from COVID-19. This mask mandate also contributes to protect our hospitals from being overly full with COVID patients, which leads to a decreased quality and availability of care for everyone. This crisis is causing greater morbidity and mortality in our county. As a retired RN, I have been hearing from colleagues about how stressful and dire the situations are at our three-county hospitals. It's heartbreaking what healthcare workers are experiencing at work. They're continuing to provide optimal care to patients and their families, but there are too many deaths per week in our county. Nurses are dreading going to work. Staffing shortages are at the most critical level yet during this pandemic. We cannot mandate our county citizens to get vaccines, but wearing masks is a relatively easy and expensive thing to do to decrease the risk of spreading COVID. Our children are precious. They need to be in school, but they need to be healthy. I realize there will be need to be, there will be, there will need to be some exceptions for certain children with developmental mental and medical disabilities. We need to make mask-wearing socially acceptable as the smart, caring thing to do. Children aged seven to 13 have been shown to be able to make accurate inferences about the emotions of others with partial facial covers. And the U.S. Food and Drug Administration recently approved a transparent surgical mask that may be useful in younger children. Concerns about reduced oxygen saturation and carbon dioxide retention when wearing a mask has not been supported by available data. Wearing a mask and being a good citizen seems like an important learning opportunity for our students. Please advocate and support Dr. Merkantant. This is from Dr. Kathleen Fabian Dio, Bluewater OBGYN. As a concerned mother of two children, I hope you listen to the medical professionals and let Dr. Merkantant give the advice we so greatly need. As a physician of concerned mothers of the unborn, please help us stop the spread of this horrible virus. The physical and mental health of our children is at stake. Let Dr. Merkantant do her job. Let her guide us on the best way to keep our kids in school. Yes to masks. Marilyn Denul, Dr. Merkantant has got our backs. I support her 100%. She is doing what she is, she is doing what she is doing for our safety. Isn't that what's, what it's all about? Your safety, your family's safety. And you're talking about censure, really. You are leaders. You, our leaders, are dropping the ball here, and I am ashamed of each and every one of you. You owe our chief health officer an apology. She is doing her job, and obviously, you all are not. Bonnie Barrett, St. Clair County citizen. As a resident of St. Clair County, I wish to voice my concern about our Board of Commissioners' stance on a letter to censor St. Clair County Public Health Medical Director Annette Merkantant. I feel this is inappropriate and dangerous territory in which to travel. I realize these have been difficult times with illness, death, and restriction affecting our quality of life due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I do, however, support the medical knowledge and well-thought-out best practices for the health of our community, country, and the world population. I feel that the censor, I feel that the censor of Dr. Merkantant would be politicizing a critical public health issue. To use the lame excuse that she did not give enough notice lacks validity. Masks are available in every store and not difficult to obtain, so compliance does not create an undue hardship for those affected. Are masks somewhat uncomfortable? Possibly for some. Learning to care enough about humanity to bear little inconvenience is a valuable lesson to all. Please, Carrie, I implore you that you do all that you can to avoid having a censored letter drafted with your name involved. This is from Susan Ingalls. I am writing in support of Dr. Merkantant, who has done nothing but keep St. Clair County safe during these last almost two years of this pandemic. The St. Clair County Health Department is my go-to place to get boosted, tested, and just to find out information about current guidelines and variants of COVID-19. This is about science and health, our health, this county's health. Please do not treat it as a political party. Christine Weston, good evening. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend the meeting tonight, but I would like my comments read aloud. I first have to say that I cannot believe that so many of you who sit on this Board of Commissioners are so struck, are so, I'm sorry, are so stuck on your own political beliefs that you would rather harm children by making them wear these masks all day, every day, in school than actually stick up for what is right. I agree with a lot of the other parents who were at the last meeting saying that you all should be held responsible for child abuse and abuse of power. I do not believe there is, I do not believe there is nothing you can do about this crazy doctor's nonsensical mandates. If you missed it last night, even Joe Biden's press secretary stated that they are, they are working on getting rid of mandates. The United Kingdom's Prime Minister Boris Johnson announced yesterday that they will be getting rid of all mandates and all restrictions from COVID, and that every new COVID variant is getting more and more mild. I truly can't believe you would sit up there and let yourselves look so absurd when so many people have pointed out and brought in proof that these masks do not work, but yet again, here we are. I also don't understand why you think it is okay that you have a choice to wear a mask or not, but it's not okay to give parents the choice if they want their children to wear a mask. If you can't even sit through a meeting with a mask on your face, then think of how much worse that would be for a child who doesn't understand that you look at COVID politically, and they have to suffer for it. To me, the new COVID variant isn't Omicron. It, it should be called the political COVID variant, because all of this is all about politics and power, and you try to use political fear-mongering tactics to get all of us to comply with this ridiculous mandate that does not have any proof that wearing a mask stops COVID. If you, as adults, want to go along and give in to all of the fear-mongering like little sheep, you and this great free country of ours can do so. All we are asking tonight is that you do the constitutional thing and give us and our children the same right and respect to not be sheep, but to be wolves. We will not stop protesting this until you start doing what we, the people elected and paid for you to do, which is fighting for our and our, our children's rights. Want to do one?
So we're gonna go from red to live. So the first person to come up tonight is Palm Prescott.
Hello, everybody. My first name is Prescott. My last name is Palm. I'm 20 years old. Sorry, my first time. Am I out of procedure?
No, no, I apologize for reading that wrong.
No problem at all. I just want to go ahead and give you guys a little bit of information from a federal database, the VAERS. It's a CDC-regulated database for all vaccine injury. I'm just gonna start with, just reading them off some unlimited time. State of Michigan, age 35, female, 28 weeks pregnant, Pfizer vaccine number, I'm sorry, VAERS ID number 918034. Vaccine given, 12/23. Symptoms: exposure during pregnancy, fetal death, fetal heart rate, abnormal fetal hypokentia, premature delivery, stillbirth. This woman made her own report after these symptoms were recorded. This report says, "I was 28 weeks and five days pregnant when I received the first dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Two days later, on December 25th, 2020, I noticed decreased movement of the baby. The baby was found not to have a heartbeat in the, in the early morning of 12/26/2020, and I delivered a two-pound, seven-ounce, non-viable female fetus at 29 weeks gestation." New Mexico, VAERS ID report ID number 930916, Pfizer, age 32, female. January 7th, 2021, was the date of the vaccine, Pfizer. Adverse effect reported, January 8th, 2021, vaginal bleeding, premature birth and delivery. Iowa, VAERS ID number 952671, December 22nd, 2021. Age 39, female, vaccinated, Moderna, was the date of vaccination, December 22nd, 2021. Date of injury, January 15th, 2021, baby no longer had a heartbeat. New York, VAERS ID number 932107, age 37, female, Pfizer. Given the first dose on January 6th and received an adverse effect on January 8th, 2021, abortion spontaneous, muscle spasms. Georgia, VAERS ID number 2, I'm sorry, 928892. December 20th, 2020, Pfizer, symptoms given, Pfizer vaccine given, January 8th. Symptoms noticed the next day, abortion spontaneous, antenatal screening, abdominal, I'm sorry. Antenatal screen abnormal. I'm sorry, that was a process where they use a, I Googled that, antenatal screen abnormal. So they used an outside machine to check this woman's baby, and it was abnormal, and she ended up losing that child. Tennessee, VAERS ID number 953068, Pfizer, age 31, female. Given the vaccine, December 19th, 2020. Incident occurred, December 19th, 2020. Symptoms: abortion spontaneous. This woman made this statement in this VAERS ID report, and I want to read it to you guys. And this is exactly how it is. I'm not repeating myself. "I had a very early miscarriage at six weeks. I had a very early miscarriage at six weeks. I had a very early miscarriage at six weeks."
About 15 seconds, please.
"Had a very early miscarriage at six weeks." I should have probably left that out there. This is a, this is a spontaneous report from a continuation, contactable physician. No known allergies in the right arm. Appropriate RA's, ethics committees, and investigations are appropriate. California, VAERS ID 922, age 34, females is the last one. Sorry, December 17th, 2025. Were given the vaccine on December 17th and received an adverse effect on December 31st. Symptoms: abdominal pain, abortion spontaneous, and human cryonic gonadropin, which is, which is a chemical used to.
Please finish up. Thank you.
It's a chemical used to help develop the fetus, and that was decreasing after vaccination, and vaginal hemorrhage. So I want you guys to think about that when you vacci, when you mandate this to the little girls that are going to St. Clair County recently who just want to have a tech program in the future. Love you guys. It's all come from a place of love.
Dave, someone yielded this time. Helen Hermes.
I believe there is a solution for everything. The goal should be to do the right thing. For several years, the COVID's pandemic has been foisted upon our country because of greed. I'm going to read a little thing from Henry Kissinger. If you remember him, he was the Secretary of State for the U.S. Government. Kissinger quote from a speech to the WHO Council on Eugenics, February 25.
Could you put the microphone a little closer to you? Get your feedback.
Oh, okay. February 25th, 2009. "Once the herd accepts mandatory vaccination, it's game over. They will accept anything, forcible blood or organ donations for the greater good. We can genetically modify children and sterilize them for the greater good. Control sheep minds, and you control the herd. Vaccinine, vaccinine makers stand to make billions. And many of you in this room are investors. It is a big win-win. We thin out the herd, and the herd pays for us for extermination services." This is from Henry Kissinger. Now, people are divided because of lack of information and propaganda. It is the individual's responsibility to know the fox, facts. Most people do not take action unless the problem is at their doorstep. That is like being late to the dance when "Good Night, Irene" is being sung. There are many rumors that go around, and I'll give you two quick examples. I was talking to someone the other day about the landfill. And I asked him, "Do you know anything?" I didn't say landfill. I said, "Do you know anything about the county dump?" "Oh, yes, it's smelly. It stinks. It's this. It's that." I listened to him go on, and I said, "No." "It is a little gem we have here in our county. It brings in $800,000 a year." So that's one rumor I sort of squashed. The other one was Mrs. Merkanti's wages. By the time I heard it, she was making $400,000 a year, and she had two specific departments under her. Well, when I looked at the contract, that was not true. So you have to be careful what is being said in the heat of the moment. The problem to masking goes much deeper than the mask, just what our students being subjected to in schools.
About 15 seconds, Helen. Sorry. Everybody gets three minutes.
Okay. Well, I can't talk that fast. But anyways, just one more thing. The United States Courts, there's a lawsuit being filed against Alex Azar, Anthony Fauci, Peter Daszak, Phil Barick, FA defendant, CDC defendant, NIAID defendant, Moderna defendants, and Pfizer. I have a lot of stuff highlighted here.
Please finish, Helen. I'm sorry. You call it.
Larry, you've already yielded your time. Unfortunately, you can't yield it twice.
Well, that's okay. But anyways, there's a lot to this pandemic, folks, and everyone needs to know. Even Mrs. Merkanti. I do not recommend.
Thank you, Helen. Your time is up.
That you be fired. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, Kevin Watkins.
Well, you're supposed to come up that quick. Yeah, Kevin Watkins, I, uh, well, um, thank you for having us all here, Commissioners. We braved the weather. I just, um, can kind of browse in the, the agenda here. Just, really concerned that in the last meeting, I guess you discussed about censuring. Censuring, I'm wondering, censuring what? Censuring the Health Department Director for doing her job. I remember some meetings ago, I believe Mr. Gary Fletcher made clear that you couldn't fire her for doing her job. It's in the job description. Her job is to look after the public, for the health of the public of, in St. Clair County, everyone. And as unfortunate, led by one of the Commissioners here, rallying, grew to try to have her job taken away from her. And then, this is something that is, that is very much so disappointing. I, I feel that, later I found a research, I believe that a number of Commissioners are not believing that, but you're allowing one Commissioner to bully you into that way. Even the fact of doing a censure or any type of discipline, or even, even speaking in public against the Health Department Director is really much inappropriate. I've had someone, and stated something you're looking to in the future, have changed the protocol where, where the Health Department Director will have to come to you to approve what they do. I would like to know, all I know, some of you, what your, what your profession is, but I want to know how are you qualified to do something like that? So do you go to your physician, or you go to the police, police office and, and tell them what they need to do to, to put a stop or arrest someone? That's not your, your role. The person has a, has a job description. You hire that person, and they do their job. And then because of pressure from a certain population of people, because not understanding, not following the science, I don't think there's any medical doctors in front of me, or I'm not sure of any nurses in front of me, but then you hire someone with that expertise that's followed the science, and you want to micromanage them. It's totally inappropriate. I'm confused here about the closed session, too. If you already had your mind made up to, to censure or letter or, or divide the job, or whatever you're gonna do, that is confusing, kind of unfortunate if you already made your mind up. I told you, I was concerned that the person who led that committee to look at this job and maybe make some changes is led by the person who's leading the group that's trying to, call, reach on, right, right to work, to try to, try to remove the Health Department Director. So I'm very, you guys are very, doing, doing things totally, totally out of line, totally inappropriate. I'm very, very disappointed that you have come to that kind of pressure.
Got about 15 seconds.
Okay, 15 seconds. So, so by 15 seconds, I would say that I hope you would reconsider that. I hope you take back, understand what you've done, what your job is to do, what the Health Department Director's job is to do. We're in this pandemic. We've been, she's been doing a great job with navigating this through that. And for you to throw stones and to disrupt her work is very unfortunate and disappointing. Keep in mind, yes, you know, it's not about just trying to be elected and follow what, what the people in the front row want you to do to get re-elected. That's, that's not hopefully what you're there to do. Time is up?
Please, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jay?
This is from Lauren Raditz. Excuse me. My name is Lauren from Marysville, Michigan. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, but would like my email to be heard and read to the Board for tonight's meeting. I want to thank you for your time and hearing from the citizens of the county. As far as masks on my children, or any mandate in a school I pay taxes for, I have, I have the say as a parent as to what protection for any virus my kids use, not the schools. And by government standards, at the age of 11, a child can have consent without a parent present, so they also have a right to say no. I am paying taxes for my children to go to school, so I expect our, our school districts to stand up for what's best for our children, not what's best for the school's pocket. You're making our kids wear useless, dirty masks with minimal air breaks is not what is best for any child, and shame on you for playing games with our kids' health and mental health by forcing these mandates that are being forced by an unelected employee of our county who is also paid by our tax dollars. These mandates have no business being forced in a free country. We all know the real, the real reason behind forcing these mandates is because the schools accepted money from the government who is threatening for payback if we don't follow these mandates. And now our kids are paying the consequences. Where would that money come from? That's right, us taxpayers. So as a taxpayer, I will have a say on what my kid does and doesn't do. If a vaccine mandate goes through, I will pull my kids from public schools, only removing more funding from the schools. We, as U.S. citizens, have the right to protest peacefully under the First Amendment. Our children standing up for their freedom and standing, and saying no to masks is just that. We had mobs of people burning down cities and considered that peaceful, and the government encouraged it. And the schools cowardly sent our children home. encouraged it, and the schools cowardly sent our children home when they used their freedom to protest your mandate and were marked absent. Everyone says follow the science. Well, let's talk science. There is no significant reduction of transmission of COVID. The numbers are ma, are about the same of the, of those who don't mask. The largest droplets of COVID can still pass through masks. CO2, AKA carbon dioxide, builds up under these masks. Increased temperature and the amount of people in a room affect CO2. The rise of CO2 ingestion causes headaches, fatigue, poor concentration, and even worse as we continue to ingest it, including cognitive impairment. So you want your false sense of security through a mask? You wear it.
About 15 seconds.
My kids have the right to say no and the freedom to do so. Freedom is never more than a generation away from extinction. It must be fought for, protected, and handed to our children to do the same. Quote by Ronald Reagan. Emergencies have always been the pretext and, and which safeguards of individual liberty have been eroded. Frederick Van Hayek. If freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent, we may be led like sheep to the slaughter.
Gotta finish up, Jay.
George Washington. Time for officials to brush up on history, because clearly this is the type of behavior in government our forefathers warned us about. Uh, Mike McCracken. Good evening, commissioners. I cannot attend tonight and request my email be read. We need your help. I am an Iraqi war veteran and I value my rights and the idea of America. Those, those rights and that idea are being unlawfully stripped away from us and many of us will not stand for it anymore. With your help, if you'll stand with the people that voted you in, your neighbors, your community, and overrule unlawful decisions, we can take these rights back. Please hold true to the oath you took and uphold the Constitution. Unmask our kids, remove the mandates, and remove the head of the Health Department's authority to make any further mandates. Steve Binnsfield. Good evening. I would like tonight's comments to be read in this evening's commissioners meeting. This is regarding much of the misinformation spewed out by Director Merkantown. This is, this is much she says that is. That's how it's written. Prove, provably inaccurate. It really is quite embarrassing that she somehow has been appointed to this post. She has weekly public live streams in which she exhibits her lack of knowledge on a week in and week out basis. A couple of months ago, on one of her live streams, somebody asked her about the FDA-approved version of the vaccine. Coma, Comer natty? Thank you. And she wasn't even familiar with that term. Obviously, nor am I. Which, by the way, per Pfizer, per Pfizer's own documentation, is still not yet available in the United States. So any vaccine administered here is technically still under emergency use authorization and not officially FDA-approved. On another livestream, she openly admitted to not having firsthand knowledge of much of this information she's basing her tyrannical mandating of her community on. She vaguely cites experts' opinions while at the same time completely disregards others. The professional opinion of three world-renowned epidemiologists, one from Oxford, one from Stanford, one from Yale. The fact that more than 50,000 medical professionals from around the world have signed on to the Great Barrington Declaration, the inventor of the mRNA vaccine technology, who personally has not less than six different patents involved in our current vaccines, as well as doctors who's the most published in his field in the history of the world. All of those experts strongly disagree with everything she says, but we're supposed to believe the woman who just today said that the reason there is a disclaimer on the box of medical masks saying that they don't protect against viruses is just something they put on the box. This is the medical expertise of the person who is supposed to be making decisions for our county, and ultimately her mandates have resulted in people's kids being unenrolled from school. Without her tyrannical mandate, our public school children would still be unmasked in class and my four children would still be enrolled. We have unenrolled them over her unconstitutional mask mandates, and we are not the only ones.
About 15 seconds.
Regardless, what everyone's personal views are about topics, about these topics, the fact of the matter is that the data is not objective. If anything, it leads towards the mask and vaccines not being helpful, but no one can say it is objective one way or the other. Even if there were zero adverse events reported after vaccines, which there are thousands, the fact remains that this technology has existed for only one year, so the long-term effects are still not known. No real medical professional can objectively say these are safe and effective.
Finish up, Jay.
Because we don't know what might happen in the next five to 10 years. Am I missing who this room? I guess. Radha Jandisaman, DMD. Hi, Jeff. I'm writing you regarding tonight's meeting. I know I have emailed you before and you were kind enough to share it with the rest of the commissioners. I do hope you do the same, and I know I am writing last minute. I want you to know I would rather not attend the meeting because I hear how unruly some attendees are, and I am not about to discuss healthcare and science with some of those who do not read the truly scientific and medical data. I honestly appreciate all of you having to sit through these meetings lately. Having said that, I want to let you know I fully support Health Department decisions, regardless of what they, what they are, because Dr. Merkantown and her staff follow the science and the CDC and the state national guidelines. The New England Journal of Medicine is a reputable resource that most people would not read, but we in healthcare follow along with CDC guidelines, and those decisions go hand in hand with these articles. Not vague sources of internet searches. Irrespective of people's politics, I wish everyone would put politics aside, and I wish they just concentrate on medical advice based on medical science, just like when we go to our doctor's visits and listen to their advice. Unfortunately, there are so many of us who would rather not attend meetings like this but feel very strongly in supporting Health Department and the decisions they make and support Dr. Annette Merkantown, who's truly all about finding, following guidelines. I sure hope this does not put our voice at a disadvantage, because it's not about who can speak louder or fight harder, it is about the community's safety. And we all know the people who specialize in this know more than those who are not in healthcare. Like any other profession, I would not take my accountant's advice to get my tooth fixed. Thank you for listening, and I hope it means something to all of you to know we do care. Uh, this is Eric Sink Major. Let me get a drink of water if you don't mind. It may be, this is the same one. Yep, that one was the last meeting. This one's dated January 20th as well.
Many of them came in.
That day? Okay.
At 5:30 or so, that the.
Yeah, let me, some second. This was 5:18 to you, Georgia, though. That's probably from, uh, Mr. Sink Major?
Yes.
So that's, that's a, that was the only.
I have not gotten any.
You had not gotten?
No.
Okay. This one. Rachel Weiner. Sound familiar? My name is Rachel Weiner and I am the mother of two boys who attend Washington Elementary School in Marysville. They are in kindergarten and second grade and haven't had a normal experience thus far. My husband and I do not support Dr. Merkantown's decision for the mask mandate. So we have had our boys home for the entire month thus far of Ju, of July. During this timeframe, they have told me every single day that they miss their friends and their teachers. It is not fair to our children to have their lives interrupted because someone else believes that they should be wearing masks at school. It should be a choice. I want my children to experience a normal school life. They deserve to breathe freely, play with their friends, and receive an education within the walls of the school. Unmask our children and let them live the life they deserve. This is from Pam Wall. St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, dear commissioners, I'm writing in support of the St. Clair County Health Director, Dr. Annette Merkantown. It seems that she is being punished for doing her job. I am sure that as commissioners, you keep abreast of the weekly reports on current transmission rates of COVID in our county. The numbers are alarming. Losing 25 to 40 people a week from a preventable, preventable disease is a tragedy. Even more alarming and tragic is the parade of internet experts that speak for hours on end, disrupting the important business of the County Board of Commissioners, showing not an ounce of compassion or empathy for thousands of members of our community that have suffered from COVID, still struggle, struggle with lingering symptoms or the pain of the loss of a loved one. Somehow, we have become a community that cares not for the well-being of others and is willing to play Russian roulette with our own lives rather than follow simple steps to keep themselves and those around them healthy. I am as tired of masks and not being able to be, feel comfortable out and about as everyone else. Right now, with the positivity rate at nearly 40%, I don't even want to leave my house. This should and could have been over, or at least manageable by this time, had our citizens followed mitigation efforts recommended by Dr. Merkantown and the medical community overall. Please, do what is right. You do your citizens a disservice when not standing up for what you know to be true and right over the loud and non-fact-based rhetoric that has poisoned your meetings. Dr. Merkantown has no motive but protecting the health of our community. She is a compassionate, caring individual that has dedicated her life to helping others. She deserves better. This is from Susan Peters. I support Dr. Merkantown. She's doing an amazing job in a tough situation. Everyone wants to get their own way like children anytime they are inconvenienced. Please remember, we are in a serious global pandemic. Please read this aloud and include it in the minutes. I think there's one more here. Is that right?
Yeah.
Good. Uh, this is from Virginia Corey, Fort Grasset. Uh, Kay Heptin, please read my, please remade, read my email into the minutes of the record of the February 3rd Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm ready to support Dr. Merkantown and the St. Clair County Health Department. Threats to her personally and to her employment are not acceptable. She has worked tirelessly and used science-based approach to help protect our community. Does she get it right every single time? I would say yes, based on available science. She carefully does get it right. I have participated in recent meetings at St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, which have been well-attended by citizens who have emotionally offered their opinions about non-science-based theories of COVID. These people are unvaccinated, not wearing masks, and have packed the meeting room. They are well-organized and consist of people who travel from out of the county. They have been vocal in our opposition to the St. Clair County Health Department measures to protect the public. Understandably, people supporting science-based approaches to healthcare have not been present at the meeting out of valid concerns for safety regarding, regarding COVID transmission. Please don't imagine that citizens on both sides of the political spectrum are unaware of the dangerous trends to politicize health issues. Please continue to support Dr. Merkantown.
Kim Hardrop.
It's forced out.
Oh, TOP, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak. And first, I'd like to say I, I stand with everybody, uh, standing and fighting for their kids. Um, I don't want to, I don't want to take the spotlight away from this, but, um, tonight I'm here for a different reason. The City of Yale has sent out threatening letters to the people stating they contracted out to have these so-called smart meters installed. If you don't, they will shut off the water supply to your house or fine you, under ordinance 176D. These meters give off RF radiation, which is a Class II-B possible carcinogen to humans, possible fire hazard, and will invade our privacy and can be hacked. I have been going to the city meeting since October. First meeting, I addressed the threatening letters and told them that running water was a basic human right. John Osborne, our former city mayor, man, the, city manager, said, "To some people it is." Who says that? Never in a million years would I consider to shut off anybody's water or even want to. We need water to live. I'd also like to point out that the former mayor told us that the city didn't send the letters, the company did. So the city is allowing a company to use their address and city logo. It's on every letter that was sent. It's all over this. City of Yale. Also, when I checked online, it seemed we don't even have a 176 ordinance. So why are they sending false letters out to the people? And how is this even legal to do? There is no law that says you have to have a smart meter. The only thing that was mandatory by the state was the cross connection inspection, which by the way, the city has an ordinance for. And out of the nine years I've lived there, we have never had one. I have spoken to a few other residents in the city and they have told me that they just come and install the meters. One lady told me a guy was watching a YouTube video for the install. The city signed this contract during a pandemic, an almost $400,000 contract, at a time where people were told to stay home and be afraid of everyone. At one meeting, it was stated that the old meters were obsolete, so I found the meters that I could buy. And it changed to, "The system will be obsolete." Everything that I have given to them, it changes back. We go back and forth, back and forth. My husband offered a proposal that we would read our own meters and send it in, which we rightfully can. And they charge a small fee to manually put that information in the system. They only need to send a person out once a year to read it. He even told them we would buy our own meters in a counter that connects outside. The new part-time city manager claims that other cities charge $30 to $60, and that covers the labor and putting in the system. I gave the city board a few, a few of the cities that provided opt-outs. They sure weren't charging 30 to 60 a month.
About 15 seconds.
What was your name? Thank you.
One was only $40 extra a year. But why do we have to pay more for a job that we already, we're already paying for? And pay more for only reading 36 houses, maybe less because some aren't occupied? Also, people need to pay for the plumbing because now they want it upstairs. They're working on some solution for the people that have to pay for plumbing. The mayor protest said DTE charges around $60, yes, but she failed to say it was a one-time fee and about $10 a month. On December 27th, they held a special meeting, which was, which I thought was mainly for moving forward on the marijuana ordinances. But to our surprise, the only thing accomplished at that meeting was voting no on the opt-outs. This meeting wasn't even posted on the city window. I took a picture of it and it shows the hall was closed that day. Nothing about a meeting. We didn't sign a contract and we do not consent to these nuisance factors being forced into our homes. Also, the city owes a tax penalty, for some reason, of $14,000. And they went ahead and hired a law firm that charges $200 to $300 an hour to look into it. We had no see, say in that. That was also a surprise at that meeting. By the way, microwaves, cellphone, Wi-Fi, et cetera, which the board keeps telling me is the same thing, they give off RF radiation. But we have a choice to use them and shut them off. We also get a choice from the electric company and gas for the smart meters, but we don't with these. Something needs to be done about these municipalities in this county. Someone needs to step in and investigate. I'm even down for a forensic audit at this point. Why not? My water's gonna go up. My sewage is gonna go up. Our taxes keep climbing. It's ridiculous. The city's breaking us anyways, one way or another. I'm just asking for some help. They should not be allowed to just shut off somebody's water because they don't want a smart meter and someone that actually researched them before signing a contract. Thank you.
Marcy McClellan?
Good evening. I just want to say that I'm very thankful that the mask made, mandate was ended and our kids got to go back to school this week with no masks. I have one, um, son who was out for the whole month doing his work at home and was not able to be involved in the sports because our school wouldn't allow him to be while he was doing his work from home. So I'm very thankful that that ended. But I'm also here to say that I believe that you should still be submitting a censure letter to the Health Director for imposing a mandate on our children and only the children of our county because of what could possibly happen. I don't think that we do things because of something might happen. I think that if you looked at the data that I gave you from each school website, um, there was no supporting needing to mask our children, even if it was, there's, you shouldn't, you shouldn't mask our children because the older population is, um, experiencing higher levels. That's just not even something that should be done. So I'm just here to say that I am in support of continuing forward with a censure letter to be in her file, because you stated last meeting also that there, one of you had mentioned that there wasn't anything in her history to support letting her go. So you need to start documenting things, and I believe that six of you were not in favor, at least, of this mandate. So I believe that it should continue forward. I will be here next meeting. I'm gonna keep looking at the data at these three schools because there should be some differences, I would say, from what was before to now this mandate being ended. I, I don't believe that the data that was given from the Health Department really supported doing this. I don't believe that it showed anything. I also don't believe that there's one person on this board that is trying to make the decisions. I think it's something that is being looked at over what has happened over the last several months and couple of years that we've been going through this. I also want to say that the last meeting, uh, it was stated that a backup option was a neighboring county, and I would be in full support of what neighboring counties are doing in, in mandating on their children. I would be in support of, if we. on their children. I would be in support of, if we need to have an interim county filling in for us while we're looking for someone else, I would be in support of any of the neighboring counties helping us out. So I hope that you're going to continue forward with things, looking into the jobs, splitting up the job. I'm just supportive of all that stuff. So I'm just here to say that. Thank you.
Michael McClellan.
Hi, my name is Michael McClellan. Thanks for having me here. I didn't know what I was going to talk about tonight. Actually, our basketball game got canceled, so I thought I should be here. I would have been at that. That was my wife who just spoke. But then I looked at my records. I'm a chiropractor, and I've taken over the last year and a half notes on patients that have had reactions to different things and family members and serious stuff. So it's been, this is almost two years, year and a half from the shot and whatnot. And I thought I should go and speak. This is my own thing that I have. And we keep saying the science, the science, the science, that's done. This science thing, that's done. In this doctor thing, I'm a doctor. I took boards. I went in debt, and I paid my way out. It isn't that. You don't have to be a doctor to think and to learn. I've got farmers that are extremely intelligent. So as far as the doctor title, it comes with staying up late at night and going in debt and passing national boards. And we never had any questions on masks. And I'm sure the medical profession didn't either on our boards. So the mask thing too. But the science... So I started thinking to myself, because I really, I started thinking of the Canadians right now and what they're doing. And I played rugby in Sarnia for a couple of years. And so all the Canadians that I know aren't this Justin Trudeau guy, how these... The Canadians there are strong. Everybody I know. And I just see how they're out in that cold weather, and I thought, "I can come down here tonight and speak." And what's happened, I think, over my time, no Facebook, I don't do any of that stuff, a tyrant uses lies and then force to get what they want. That's what a tyrant does. And so what's happening now, the lies are starting to unravel. There's your science. Because John Hopkins just came out with research on the mask and stuff. Just came out. You can look at it. And they're going, "Ah, wait a minute." Many, many research. You can use the Anthony Fauci book from Robert Kennedy Jr. Check it out. I mean, doctor after doctor after doctor. So you look at these things, and you go, "Whoa." So some of us have been fooled, me included. But then finally, you go, "Wait a minute, but I'm not a fool. I'm not a fool, though." So the science thing, that's changing. So a tyrant, the lies, they use lies and force. Well, the lies are unraveling, so now a tyrant uses force. "I mandate you do this." But wait a minute. I thought, "I mandate you do this." But wait, why do they have to do that? Kids aren't... "I mandate that you..." Well, they're just going to force. That's all. Well, I've traveled all over the United States during this because I have children all over the United States. And this, well, I wore this hat tonight because my kids found this flag up in the Rocky Mountains. They used my phone to do something, and they said, "We can find this in the mountains, in the trail." And they opened this little box, and here's an American flag. So I bought the hat to put it on there. I thought that was good. In Douglas County out there, my son's been involved in that county, and they've done great things in Douglas County.
About 15 seconds.
And they've done great things in Douglas County as a small county that they have. But now I think, anyway, I guess I can wrap it up with this. I've talked to people. I've talked to the guy who gets the COVID bodies, the double bag, that wore the whole mask, that wore the whole suit. I've talked to the anesthesiologist that says, "Oh, I've done it all. Got the shots and all." This is a joke. I've talked to the pharmacist.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I've talked to pharmacists that basically said, "F'ing, I've been f'ing lied to, f' and lied to, and this has really effed everything up." And I said, "Hey, man, the U.S. is going through some tough times." He said, "The U.S., whole f'ing world's effed up now." And so I'm talking to people. Again, back to the guy who gets the bodies. You talk about all these bodies in the hospital? So I've asked him, because he's done thousands. Only one time, he said, "One time at one hospital, did I get a body out of the hallway?" They said, "Take that one." One time. He does no double bag. He doesn't wear all the stuff. He doesn't even wear the gloves. He said, "I am done. They have played us." So I have talked to him. I've talked to medical doctors that go, "Oh, brother." I've talked to medical... I mean, they can't come out and say this stuff. They can't come here and say... You can say nice things, I mean, as a medical doctor here, and say, "Oh, you know, we love Dr. Merkenton." Well, I get it. I get it. But these guys have been put in positions that they didn't know. And it's tough. I didn't know. And I'll tell you, I hope that shot works. But I had a nurse necologist telling me, "Why'd they change the defen? They're not immunity to this." I had another nurse say to me, "It's almost a laughing joke at our hospital right now, but it's not funny." Because the people that got the shot are homesick, and the ones that didn't are working. And that's right from them to me. I tell you, I want it to work. I, like she said, look in the Dorlins Medical Dictionary. The shot gives you immunity. That's what a vaccine is for. We know it doesn't give you immunity because we've got many people now that have gotten the shot, and they still get sick. Do I want it to work? Yes, I do. Do I want the mask to work? Yes, I do. But it's all in it. It's not... So now it's not about... It's not about the health. It's about mandates. Here's a mandate, do this. Here's a mandate, do this. Here... Well, I don't know. Should I? Should I not? Should I? Should I be open? Should I... Well, it's all unraveling. You just can't keep it going for years. Now, you'll always get your people that are in. It's almost like a righteous movement. But no, it's not good for the people in this county. It's not good for my family. I had a patient in here recently. I grabbed her. I says, "Listen." She's so scared. Really, she only comes to my office in her doctor. I'm like, "Listen here. You are so focused on this virus for two years. You don't leave your house. You don't do this. You don't do that. You've done all the shots, right? Yes. You've wore your mask. Yes. You've done everything. You've still..." And she's, "I know, but I can't go. I can't. I'm supposed to go look at this wedding dress. I can't..." You must take your mind and focus on God. You must focus on your neighbor. You must focus on someone else. They have got you, and I've heard the term now, in a psychosis state.
About 15 seconds.
It's focused here. You got to focus here and there. The leading person from the WHO, the head doctor, when you say doctorate, I mean, his doctorate was in philosophy. Look it up. You've been played. I mean, anyway, there is studies, the Stanley, I told you before, Stanley Milgram, the university study, that video I got you, it shows how it works with your mind. It's a great video. I handed out to you guys. Stanford project. And I'm going to let you... Thanks. Thanks for listening. I hope I said something encouraging tonight. Thanks.
You get to listen to me again. This is from Mary Lynn in Tony Hool, Fort Grasset. We are writing today to express our support for Dr. Annette Merkenton and request that you, as our representatives to the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, support her as well. During this unprecedented time, we have found Dr. Merkenton to be a calm, measured voice of reason guiding us through this public health crisis. None of us have lived through a crisis such as this before, and it's imperative that we rely on the guidance of trained and educated medical professionals for leadership. If we find it ill-conceived that this Board of Commissioners would seek to censor or discipline Dr. Merkenton for her medical judgment, following science as it develops, and in trying to keep us all safe, as our elected representatives to this Board of Commissioners, we urge you to oppose attempts to censor, discipline, or terminate Dr. Merkenton, a physician educated and knowledgeable in matters of public health. Your support of Dr. Merkenton is critical, and we urge you to support her as we do. This is from Nancy Edwards, City of Port Huron. I'm requesting that the following letter be read into the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting on February 3 and included in the minutes. Commissioners and fellow residents of St. Clair County, I fully support and am thankful for Dr. Merkenton. I have been following our daily COVID numbers since August, when there was an average of 19 new cases a day in St. Clair County and a test positivity rate of 5.8%. One person died of COVID that week. I watched each month as the numbers grew. By the beginning of January, the test positivity rate had mushroomed to almost 33%. More than 20 people died of COVID each week. Each week, the number of newly new daily cases averaged over 240. With this rate of infection across the community, I saw businesses closing down or shortening their hours because they did not have enough staff to operate. Clearly, COVID was on a collision course with our schools. It was just a matter of time before too many teachers or too many students would be sick and schools would have to close, unless, unless someone had the courage to require staff and students to wear masks just for a few weeks until the numbers started to fall as predicted. The mask didn't need to stop 100% of the COVID cases, even if they could prevent 20% to 30% of the transmissions. It might be enough to keep schools open. It worked. Thanks to the short-lived and minor inconvenience of masks, schools, with very few exceptions, did not have to close. Everyone grateful to have avoided that major inconvenience owes Dr. Merkenton a huge vote of thanks. I thank you, Dr. Merkenton. Basir Saman, MDFACC Cardiology Association of Port Huron. Dear members of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, I would like to write this letter in support of our Health Department and our Public Health Officer, Dr. Annette Merkenton. The last two years have been very hard on everyone. As a physician, I have seen firsthand many people dying in front of our eyes in the hospital. It has been very rough to understand how some people see the COVID-19 pandemic as a political issue, but rather a very real health issue affecting all of us. Dr. Merkenton is not only a physician, but also holds a Master of Public Health degree. Dr. Merkenton has the training and the understanding of the science of a pandemic and has been continually following all the new scientific data so she could lead us with the best recommendations, guidelines, and mandates to protect our community. We may not always agree with mandated safety measures, but St. Clair County's public health leadership has saved and continues to save many lives in our community. I, as a physician, am confident and truly appreciative of all the hard work Dr. Merkenton continues to do and all the advice she gives. I strongly believe that we need to continue to rely on her decisions and actions as she is the best we can dream to have in such hard times. Please, let's put emotion and politics aside and think rationally of how to avoid more loss of life and more hospitalizations, and allow us, the medical community, to breathe for a moment and give us a chance to continue doing our jobs. We need Dr. Merkenton and her medical recommendations and guidelines until we can survive this awful virus. John M. Pelicek, M.D., President, St. Clair County Medical Society. Dear members of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, after much deliberation, I decided to write this letter in support of our Health Department and our Public Health Officer, Dr. Merkenton. Like everyone else, I have at times struggled with reconciling COVID mandates, lifestyle changes, and workplace concerns with my own beliefs and my resistance to government intrusion. That being said, I do not see COVID as a political issue, but rather a very real and potentially fatal threat to all of us. St. Clair County has had the advantage of guidance and leadership through the pandemic by a public health officer who is not only a physician, but also holds a Master of Public Health degree. Although no one ever foresaw the death and devastation that COVID has caused and continues to cause, Dr. Merkenton has the training and the understanding of the science of a pandemic to guide us through the most deadly exacerbation of COVID with a lower mortality rate than surrounding counties. We may not always agree with mandated safety measures, but St. Clair County's public health leadership has saved and continues to save many lives in our community. I therefore believe that the most prudent course of action is to continue to rely on that leadership to keep us safe as we navigate through this unprecedented health crisis. This is from Dr. Mark T. O'Brien. I support a dedicated, educated health professional to lead our county's healthcare services. A doctorate and master's degree supports that definition. Healthcare is not static by dynamic, but dynamic, ever-changing, particularly with a virus with which we have no experience. Science is based on many fields of specialties and reliable, repeatable data, which is the hallmark of good science. If I had issues of law, I would hire an attorney. If I had an issue with building, I'd hire a builder. There are unpopular issues in law and construction. I respect the opinion of an experienced, educated, and respected specialist in those fields. I would not ask elected, appointed individuals on direction of the legal issues of my builder's plans. I rely in the educated opinion of Dr. Merkenton whether the issue is one I support or do not like. One more. This is from Susan Christ from Fort Grasset. St. Clair County Commissioners, the COVID pandemic has certainly created uncertainty and some confusion because of the developing and evolving knowledge about its virulence and transmissibility. So it is natural that individuals have differing views on appropriate steps to combat and control it. Yet most of us are not charged with the responsibility for the health of the community as a whole, i.e. public health. That responsibility is charged to the Health Department and its leader, Dr. Merkenton, who have far greater expertise. It is not always easy or convenient to follow public health guidelines, but for the most part, they entail minor and temporary inconveniences. We should do our part and support Dr. Merkenton.
Bob Huncler.
Good evening. My name is Bob Huncler, and I teach at the college. I teach science. And I want to thank all of you for your dedication and your work of being on the Board of Commissioners. Obviously, you're in a very tough spot right now and hearing the voices and wondering what to do. And I don't know Dr. Merkenton, and I've never met her. I'm not here to... It's not because I'm worried about her or anything like that. I'm worried about the people of St. Clair County. And I hope that when you are thinking about the censoring question, that you're not concerned about whether or not you're going to get reelected. And I don't mean to be insulting. Of course, you're not thinking that. Think about the people of St. Clair County, which you do every day. Again, thank you. These... If Dr. Merkenton is censored, there's really no reason to have that position anymore. The power is gone. There's nothing else that can be done. And anyone who tries to replace her, it's a bad situation. Their predecessor will have been censored or silenced. And I realize that there may have been mistakes on both sides. And typically, those things can just be taken care of. Oh, I'm so sorry. Typically, those things can just be taken care of with a mention, "Hey, next time, let's do this. Next time, let's do that." You folks are in a tough position here because you're going to have to vote one way or another. And I, you know, we learn a lot about democracy. You know, Thomas Jefferson, if you go way back, he was terrified of what the public could vote on. I mean, if we had a true democracy, we'd all vote online, and you guys wouldn't even need to be here. But you are our leaders, and so is Dr. Merkenton, and we need that leadership. So thank you for your work.
Pam Binsfeld. Pam Binsfeld. How'd I do? All right.
Hi, good evening. To be honest, I, as well as many others, were not very happy about the decisions to only censure Dr. Merkenton. As I said last meeting, this seemed as a way to placate the people who have called out and exposed the inability for the Health Director slash Public Health Officer to properly perform her job, and very specifically as far as COVID is concerned. Commissioner Van den Bosch stated last meeting that there should be a strike system, in essence. I understand, and I'm paraphrasing what he said. I would like to pose this question, and I will use the example Commissioner Van den Bosch used last meeting. If one of your employees didn't know how to operate the tractor or one of the big... I'm not a farmer. I'm not familiar with all that, but one of the big machines that are used on many farms, and instead of learning how to use the machine, hopped on and began to plow the fields. Because said employee did not have the knowledge or resources to properly operate the machine, the crop was destroyed, and another employee was injured or died. Would you just slap the negligent employee on the wrist, or would that employee be immediately fired? In either scenario, a minor talking to is insufficient. And in essence, that's what the censure is. Again, to Commissioner Van den Bosch's point, this is not her first infraction on the communication level, which is the focus the board appears to be taking as far as the censure is concerned. She was talked to in September about her communication and then repeated the act just before the New Year. So strike two. On the level of her being able to adequately maneuver through COVID, she has repeatedly stated that she doesn't have the qualifications, i.e. being a virologist, epidemiologist, et cetera, to not having time to read all the studies and information that are out there. She has also never produced the information she's basing all her decisions on regarding the public's health. Stating the words "studies" and "information" and "follow the science" does not equal facts. Because of her lack or knowledge or willingness to remain ignorant and her admittance of such, her mandates have caused damage, sometimes irreparable, to many people, much like that of the negligent employee. I think it should be made clear that while some may believe this is not a personal attack on the Health Director, Public Health Officer, I do not know her personally. But I can and will question her ability to perform her job, especially as it directly affects myself and my family. her ability to perform her job, especially as it directly affects myself, and my family, and the people of the county. Because of her lack of knowledge... Oh, sorry. I apologize. I hope the board will follow through with the censure, because it is at least a step in the right direction for now. Thank you.
Sean Treadaway. Good evening, Chairman Bohm, Commissioners. An unruly crowd. It just kind of popped out. I know, just a couple of things that Jay's been reading, but if you pay attention to some of the emails that have been read, quite the insults and slingers being thrown at a bunch of parents and community members, when I don't believe we've thrown any insult at anyone other than maybe the doctor herself, but just sidebar. So, a few things for tonight. Mr. Bohm, you were quoted with the mask mandate going away, and perhaps there would be some changes in feelings. Hasn't changed mind. Community, your communication or transparency, when did all of you know about the Director's order on the masks? According to numerous interviews and statements from the board and the Director, some of you knew that was coming. The Director's own quote states, "I did share a reasoning for the order and communicated our decision to the county leadership prior to issuing. I also followed the emergency communications plan from our emergency preparedness planning documents." So, what county leadership? When was the notification made? And who is actually considered county leadership? I understand that most of your duties revolve around fiscal responsibility for the county, but perhaps there needs to be more oversight from the board into how all department directors carry out their duties and responsibilities. We look to you to ensure that departments are functioning correctly and efficiently. So, on to Mr. Fletcher's quotes. "This is not a legislative decision. This is not a board decision. They don't issue orders under the health code. The Health Department does, and she does alone." Well, maybe it wouldn't be the Director's decision alone if there were both a medical director and a health director with a checks and balance approach to implementing health orders. Is this something the Board of Health should review before implementing? What is the Board of Health's specific function? Where are they in all this? Mr. Fletcher also mentioned, "I don't have an agenda." He mentions that. If I'm asked to review a decision, we will issue an opinion, and it'll be on the county website. Nothing hidden behind attorney-client privileges, but yet FOIA's have shown now that county emails between the Director and corporate counsel have been redacted. So, moving to the censor letter, I hope that specific rules and conduct are expressly conveyed in this letter. Dropping orders that affect thousands of children and parents should probably not happen on the eaves of holiday breaks or the end of a business week. I've heard how great of a professional she is from all the emails tonight, so maybe a little bit of heads up. Can the county administrator/controller add that to her annual review and evaluation that according to her contract states must have measurable goals and objectives?
About 15 seconds.
Have these annual reviews been completed? If so, are they published on the website, or will we have to FOIA these reviews as well? Has the Director's Review Committee, the three members of the Commissioners, have you been able to see these reviews?
Please wrap it up.
Okay. And then, Mr. McConaughey made a statement that finding a replacement for the Director would be hard to fill. With all the healthcare workers that have been fired over the last year, I can't believe you'd say it'd be hard to fill. Thanks.
Vicki Blackburn. It is my distinct honor and privilege to humbly support Dr. Mercantant. I've sat next to her at vaccine clinics. She works tirelessly 24/7, trying to keep our county safe and protected. On top of that, she has to worry about uninformed people coming to her with anecdotal stories of what happened to different people when we know that statistical analysis is what we need to look at. That's an issue. Integrity for this Board of Commissioners. I would say that instead of a censure, I am... It's an affront to talk about a censure for this consummate professional who holds you in respect, as she just talked to me before this meeting. I would say, instead of a letter of censure, that you need to give her a letter of gratitude and support. She has a spine of steel, and she has navigated this situation with total professionalism. And now, I would say that if you want this issue to go away, which I imagine you do, that you consider thanking her and knowing the people like me that didn't know you before tonight. I'm doing research. I have the information in each one of you. We've talked about office hours and making a meeting, and I'll be... From now until, I will be supporting her, and I'm affiliated with some different groups. We will be mobilizing, and the people, the few people that come up here with anecdotal stories and think that they are the majority, that's going to stop, because people like me are going to hold your feet to the fire respectfully, and in this day of COVID, hopefully with love. Dr. Mercantant needs a letter of gratitude and respect. The other point is, quickly, that if you want this situation to go away, our area's had enough bad publicity. And this is a prime example of how we could end up on the news again or in the media, and it's going to look bad for all you folks, because, and I don't want that to happen, but people are going to be informed. And they're going to know anecdotal versus professional...
About 15 seconds.
Professionally being a physician who has served her community more than anyone can imagine. And I thank you for your time and your support of Dr. Mercantant.
I would like to let you know how much I appreciate the work Dr. Mercantant has done on behalf of the residents of our county. I am pleased she has made recommendations based on public safety and known science. It is, of course, frustrating that the recommendations and mandates have changed on a regular basis, but that is how science works. We learn new things, and we adjust our thinking and our behavior based on the information. I've been told that you are hearing lots of complaints about the mask mandates the county has put in place, and very little positive feedback. I have not spoken out before because the county was following the science, in fact, spell out, and the facts spelled out by CDC. I had no reason to speak out, but I need you to know that as a teacher, I appreciate the fact that we are doing everything we can to make sure our schools are staffed and our students can attend school in person. In no way do I believe Dr. Mercantant should be let go, and that position should never be filled by anyone that is not a doctor. Please share this letter with the Commissioners. Kathleen Swantek. I'm writing to support the St. Clair County Health Department and Dr. Mercantant. As a provider of services to people with disabilities in licensed and unlicensed residential settings in this county, our staff have relied on the information and partnership with Dr. Mercantant and her team at the Health Department. This partnership has kept us steady during these very turbulent times, and those who serve have benefited from Dr. Mercantant's steady guidance and her directives based on science. I fully support Dr. Annette Mercantant and her team at the Health Department. We are a safer community because of her presence. This is from Kathleen Tronjo. First, I am asking that my letter be read aloud at the meeting and subsequently placed in the minutes of the meeting. I am writing to you because due to my underlying medical conditions, I am unable to attend large gatherings, especially where the majority of people attending are unmasked and not socially distancing. Otherwise, I would be there in person to support the efforts and guidance that Dr. Mercantant has provided to this community for the past two years. Her medical knowledge and her willingness to do the right thing in the face of threats and bullying has been admirable. She has kept the citizens of St. Clair County, especially our children, safe and able to continue in-person learning. I have relied upon her weekly Facebook Live presentations and the information shared throughout this pandemic. She just reports facts and answers each question based on science from the MDHHS or from the CDC. And if she doesn't have the answer, she either will find it for, find for it for you, or honestly say, "We don't know." I personally have come to respect her, not only for her knowledge, but her compassion. I would, it would be a mistake to let few very vocal numbers of people determine her fate, because they don't believe in science. I hope that you will support your medical director for the incredible job she has done, despite all the negativity and falsehoods surrounding the medical facts regarding COVID protocols in our county. I highly recommend that you renew her contract and retain her services. I have been quite disappointed by the threatening actions of this government board so far. Christina Boland. I'm writing to you in support of Dr. Annette Mercantant in her role as Medical Director for the St. Clair County Health Department. As a Minister of Clinical Forensic Nursing Services for Turning Point's Forensic Nurse Examiner Program, it has been my distinct pleasure to work with Dr. Mercantant for the past two years in her role as Medical Director of FNEP. Turning Point FNEP is a community-based program that serves Macombe and St. Clair Counties, providing direct and indirect care and services to approximately 350 patient survivors of sexual assault and intimate partner violence annually at no cost. Dr. Mercantant was critical in establishing these specialized services for residents of St. Clair County who experience trauma, violence, and maltreatment. Without her guidance, advocacy, and commitment to the health and well-being of St. Clair County, the St. Clair County community, these free emergency services would not be available. Dr. Annette Mercantant is dedicated to ensuring positive health outcomes to the community that she serves. She maintains a high professional standard while practicing and providing recommendations from evidence-based practice. Through her guidance, we are able to provide best practices, high-quality care to patients who experience sexual assault and intimate partner violence. It is with highest grade regards that this letter of support is submitted on behalf of Dr. Annette Mercantant. She is instrumental in the continued commitment to optimize the health of all residents of St. Clair County in her role as the Medical Director of the St. Clair County Health Department. Dr. Mercantant has already made an invaluable impact to medicine and community health, and I hope her unremitting dedication and devotion to both these fields are acknowledged in her favor. From Faith Brody. I am writing to express my support for Dr. Mercantant and her staff at the St. Clair County Health Department. COVID is a disease, just like asthma, gonorrhea, and malaria. We rely on our trained professionals to contain and treat these diseases, just like we need to do with COVID. I wouldn't try to tell an accountant or a butcher how to do their jobs, because those are not my specialties. I wouldn't tell a lawyer how to approach arguing a case, because I saw a TV lawyer do it one way. It's the same exact thing with Dr. Mercantant and her staff. We need to respect that these people are trained professionals with years of schooling who know the right way to handle things in their field. It deeply disappoints me to see so many people in this community seem to believe that this disease is somehow a plot by the Left to curtail freedoms, or how they see something that they don't like and automatically villainize any person or thing that says otherwise. The truth of the matter is, life isn't fair. We all have to do things that we don't like sometimes in order to protect ourselves and our community. I went to Palms Elementary, and one lesson I remember from third grade is the lesson of common good. We all give up individual liberties in order for everyone in the community to live safe, healthy, happy lives. That includes wearing a seatbelt while driving, paying taxes, and using a smartphone and social media. Yes, using iPhones and social media automatically forfeits some of your privacy. These devices and apps can and will track any and all data, messages, photos, and more, regardless of what privacy settings are installed. One more thing I would like to make note of in this email, which I understand will be read aloud at the Board of Commissioners meeting on February 3rd, is that there is a far larger liberal chunk of the county that many people realize or want to admit. I'm active on social media groups that are thousands strong, and have a very large and connected family that have grown increasingly dissatisfied with Dave rushing our commissioner. Again, I want to reiterate my support for Dr. Mercantant and her staff, and thank them for their hard work. I cannot imagine stepping up and doing what they do. This is from B. Ramesh Reddy, MD, cardiologist, and Shoshma Reddy, MD, endocrinologist. We are both physicians in practice in this community for 30 years. We have been shocked and appalled at all the havoc that COVID-19 has wrought in our community. We understand and respect that individuals may have differing viewpoints. However, we must do what is best for our community based on science, clinical evidence, and advice from our medical experts. Dr. Mercantant and her team at our Health Department have been a shining light, working tirelessly to protect the public. This has not been an easy task, especially when many of the orders that save lives are unpopular. Dr. Mercantant is a highly respected physician, and all Health Department orders are based on science, clinical evidence, and state and national guidelines and directives available at the time orders were issued. Under Dr. Mercantant's leadership, the Health Department has been instrumental in minimizing COVID-related morbidity and mortality rates in our community. Dr. Mercantant and her team at the Health Department should be commended for their tireless work and dedication to protecting the health of our community. This is from Robert Huncler. He spoke tonight. Robert, did you speak tonight? Yes. So, technically, that's a one-time thing. This is from Carolyn Alquist. I cannot believe how morally low our elected county commissioners have sunk. You were elected to represent all of the people in your district, not your personal interests and agendas. Many of your constituents support our medical director against regarding actions, excuse me, against actions regarding masking. Your selfish actions are what has prolonged this pandemic. Instead of working together, you wish to further divide people on this issue. Many school systems have already enacted masking requirements prior to the medical directors mandating this requirement. Masking vaccines protect those who cannot be vaccinated or whom have medical conditions that make them more vulnerable to disease. People continue to die from COVID because you choose to spew rhetoric instead of supporting science. I blame all of you for the decline of our economy. More money would be spent in our community if people felt safe going out to stores, restaurants, and to send their children to school. I, for one, will be at the polls for the next election and will not be casting a vote for any of the current county commissioners that support the firing of Dr. Annette Mercantant. This is from Brenda Domagolowski. I am a lifelong resident of St. Clair County, and I am writing this letter to voice my support and unwavering confidence in Dr. Annette Mercantant as the Medical Director and Public Health Officer of the St. Clair County Health Department. I believe Dr. Mercantant has shown exceptional leadership in the over 10 years she has served as the St. Clair County Medical Director and Public Health Officer by always keeping each resident her highest priority. Dr. Mercantant has been instrumental in keeping St. Clair County residents healthy and safe during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Over the past two years, Dr. Mercantant has remained dutiful and has steadily guided this community through some of the most devastating and difficult medical maladies that many of us have ever seen or experienced. She has done so with integrity and commitment. I cannot imagine the overwhelming weight she must feel during this political attack, but she remains professional and a pillar of strength in the face of adversity. Dr. Mercantant is a true model of class and grace. As we all know, this pandemic has been unpredictable at best. However, Dr. Mercantant has consistently made the residents of St. Clair County and their safety her top priority. Dr. Mercantant has had to make tough decisions during a time of unimaginable uncertainty while keeping the health and safety of each resident in mind. Dr. Mercantant has remained transparent and has kept the public informed with all of the newest information, current data, resources, and answers to the most frequently asked questions. Dr. Mercantant and her staff have worked tirelessly to get people vaccinated, provide COVID testing, support mask-wearing, and more, all in a gallant attempt to keep the residents of St. Clair County, especially the most vulnerable in our community, healthy and safe, and to alleviate the spread of this deadly virus. Dr. Mercantant is more than deserving of our support. She cares about and loves this community to the core. She could easily be successful in her own practice, or even have a job that is considerably less stressful, but she chooses St. Clair County. Dr. Mercantant chooses to care for and keep this community safe. She chooses to make decisions that are in the best interest of the health and well-being of all of our residents, because she genuinely cares for people to the depths of her soul. You cannot replace that kind of authenticity. Therefore, I implore this board to support Dr. Mercantant and to stand by her, especially during this very intense climate. I would also like to add my very sincere thank you and appreciation to Dr. Annette Mercantant for her selfless... Mercantant for her selfless and integrity-filled leadership during this most incomprehensible time. Please know that I fully stand in support of you as our Medical Director and Public Health Officer. This is from Tracy Dunsmore. As a citizen of the, of St. Clair County, this letter is a communication of support for the efforts of Dr. Mercantant and the St. Clair County Health Department staff. As a local governing entity, this pandemic has forced upon you a challenge of balancing community values and local health priorities with private citizens' understanding and acceptance of best practices which will protect their health. We have been fortunate that our local Health Department is able to work with our communities to protect the public's health and face these challenges head-on. Public health protection includes understanding, preventing disease throughout all populations, focusing on health promotion activities, and disease prevention before one becomes sick. Protecting the public's health is a collaborative effort that necessitates public and private partnership that further the application of science and best practices. As a constituent, I have understood that the obligation of the Board of Commissioners is to promote and protect constituents' health through the efforts of the local Health Department regarding individual concerns leading to the censor of Dr. Mercantant. This obligation to the citizens must be maintained. I trust that the foundation of your decision is forged with integrity, fiscal stewardship, and partnership, which will protect and promote the health of the communities you serve. It is important to make decisions based on credible knowledge of disease mitigation strategies and not, excuse me, and not based on emotion or the influence of misinformed constituents. Thank you for your time. This is from Mary Petreangelo, M.D. This letter is to again express my support for the St. Clair County Health Department and its Director, Dr. Annette Mercantant. I briefly spoke to this at one of the October meetings. They have worked tirelessly to protect the health of our county during a worldwide pandemic. I attended two board meetings in October, speakers lectured, criticized, scolded Dr. Mercantant, cherry-picking statistics and soundbites to support their opinions. This disrespected her experience, her training, her work, and the department she leads. These meetings went far beyond civil public discourse. Lives lost in the pandemic were sadly minimized. Our county has been fortunate that fewer lives have been lost than in some other Michigan counties. The Health Department is instrumental in providing the professional experience and tools needed to manage this complex, unprecedented crisis. Censor is not an appropriate action for doing one's job. This is from Rashad Demoskin, RPH. I am writing to let the St. Clair County Commissioners know that I stand in full support of St. Clair County Health Department under the leadership of Dr. Annette Mercantant. Dr. Mercantant is a highly respected physician, and she garners the admiration of those of us in the medical field. She has led her department under the most challenging circumstances with integrity and extreme dignity. Her decisions and rationale are completely balanced and based on pure science, which is what any medical professional would employ in time of a pandemic like COVID-19, and her sole goal is to protect lives. I hope that, I hope that we resort to sound minds when assessing Dr. Mercantant's performance. I am respectfully requesting that my email is shared with all of the Commissioners. This is from James Ketchum, Port Huron, Michigan. I'm compelled to write concerning the troubling pushback regarding mask mandates, especially in our schools. I, for one, think such measures reflect the desire of local health authorities to try to keep us safe, sometimes in spite of ourselves. Targeting Dr. Mercantant, making her somehow the bad person seems unfair. She and the County Health Department are acting based on most recent science. Making a political issue out of it is wrong and puts many county residents, including schoolchildren, in danger. I strongly support Health Department actions designed to protect residents from COVID-19 and would urge you to support those actions as well. On this issue, politics seems terribly out of place. Frustration aside, this is the right thing to do. This is from Tim McCullough from Port Huron. I want to state this from the beginning. I am not in favor of mask mandates. I have advocated for choice over the past two years. The positions that I have taken on the issues surrounding COVID have resulted in having my home picketed to confrontations at my children's extracurricular activities to receiving several strongly worded letters. When I say that I understand the position you are currently in, I can honestly say that I understand the position you are in. It is not an easy position. The realization that I have come to concerning COVID and the many issues it presents is that no matter what the decision is, there will always be a group of constituents that are strongly opposed to it. It has been refreshing to see residents of a community become passionate about the issue that encounters us on a daily basis. In the past, there have been times that I sat in public meetings where only a handful of people were present. As I stated in an earlier editorial, it would be nice to focus on the issue instead of resorting to personal attacks and threats. A healthy debate usually produces the best results. I write, I write all of this as a preface to the issue before you this evening, as you consider censure of Dr. Mercantant this evening. I would like you to reflect on a couple things. The first thing that I would like you to reflect upon is how the board in St. Clair County has approached the pandemic. I reflected upon the same thing for the board that I participated in. COVID has been a difficult issue to assess and attack, whether Democrat or Republican. We have all tried various approaches only to find that a different course needs to be taken. I will be the first to admit that some of the decisions I made would have been different if I knew then what I know now. I would have to believe you would feel the same way. If a censor is necessary for Dr. Mercantant in this situation, would we, and I include myself, need to be censors for a decision we made during those past two years? The second thing I would like you to consider is the entirety of Dr. Mercantant's work for St. Clair County residents. The censor has isolated a moment in time, but that moment in time does not encapsulate who Dr. Mercantant is. You do not have to agree with every decision she has made, but we can wholeheartedly say that Dr. Mercantant's desire is not political. Her desire is that every resident of our county is given access to health services and that she does everything she can to help protect them from whatever health adversary presents them. Whether it is in a poorly sanitized restaurant, or a polluted river, or a virus that originates outside of our borders, a censor of Dr. Mercantant is within your authority, but the question is for what purpose? Will a censor alleviate COVID? Will a censor bring a divided community together? To me, the answer to both those questions is no. Let's put aside what will divide us further and find a way forward together. Thank you for your time. This is from Annette Barnes, M.D. I am aware of a letter written by Dr. John Polichik, and I am also writing a statement of support for the St. Clair County Health Department as well as the Public Health Officer, Dr. Annette Mercantant. I concur with Dr. Polichik's comment and would like to reiterate that these healthcare recommendations and policies may be unpopular but are in fact based on evidence, based science, and supported by medical societies both nationally and internationally in order to protect and preserve life. This medical community has been writing, work, excuse me, working tirelessly and often to the extent of personal risk to serve the public health interest of our county. The medical and public health processes of managing through the pandemic are far from perfect but are being implemented with a willful intention of public health interests and well-being. I am extremely, extremely disheartened to hear of the malicious threats and personal attacks that have been lodged on our healthcare officials. This is from S. Akim Ali, M.D., President of the St. Clair County Medical Society. I am writing this letter to, in support of Dr. Annette Mercantant in the St. Clair County Health Department. Dr. Mercantant, M.D., is a recent president of the St. Clair County Medical Society and is a highly respected physician in the St. Clair County medical community. As far as I know, she is the first public health officer in our county who has received Master of Public Health degree and therefore can rightly claim to be an authority in this field of medicine. Dr. Mercantant's performance as a health officer with utmost dedication, efficiency, and precision has been recognized and applauded immensely in the medical community. With extreme diligence, she has dealt with a variety of health issues in the county, keeping the public and the medical profession equally informed. Whether it is the onset of a new disease such as COVID-19, or the rising of intensity of the health hazards such as drug overdoses, she has always provided most appropriate steps necessary as guidance to combat any such illness. As mentioned above, onset of the most deadly and devastating virus, COVID-19 pandemic has been a real challenge. Very vividly and very convincingly, she has demonstrated leadership guiding her department to provide most effective services to the citizens of our county, preventing this disease and saving lives. I enthusiastically support and applaud the standard and quality of care provided by our Health Department under the leadership of Dr. Mercantant and hope they continue to do so. Marianne Isaacson, MSN-RNCBN. I want to express my appreciation for the job that Dr. Annette Mercantant, M.D., M.P.H. has been doing in our community. Her education experience brings a wealth of knowledge to the job. Assessment, planning, implementation, evaluation, and reassessment are all cornerstones of the job she has done for prevention and control of disease in our corner of Michigan. Her extensive knowledge as a physician and additional education in public health brings a breadth and depth, excuse me, a breadth and depth of wisdom to evaluate risk and keep our community safe. In normal, non-pandemic times, few people would even know of Dr. Mercantant and the excellent job she does. So much goes on behind the scenes to support the health of our community. Dr. Mercantant works to maintain the optimal well-being of all in the community regardless of ability to pay for all age groups. During this pandemic, Dr. Mercantant has been thrust into the spotlight and every word and action scrutinized. Common sense seems to have evaporated and only criticism replaced it. I believe Dr. Mercantant is doing very well in these extraordinary times to communicate tough messages for the greater good of our community. The county commissioners need to stand up for her and ensure she can continue to make the hard decisions she has been entrusted to make. Sadly, the loudest, the loudest voices seem to be the ones with the least medical knowledge or experience. They are not the ones witnessing what is in the hospitals, or if they have, in their grief related to their loved ones, are misdirecting their anger and screaming at the healthcare workers. Dr. Mercantant continuously works to prevent all from having to witness what is going on in hospitals. Those that are sick only have one wish. Those that are healthy have 1,000 wishes. I would like to see everyone in our community have 1,000 wishes. Kudos to Dr. Mercantant for not bending to the whims of the current wind, although it may be stiff at times. I appreciate the job Dr. Mercantant is doing, and I expect that she will be given the opportunity, excuse me, given the appropriate support to be able to keep up the good work. This is from Charles Kelly from Fort Grashit. I ask that this be read to the Commissioners, St. Clair County Commissioners. I write in support of Dr. Mercantant. Her decisions and Health Department orders have relied on science and been totally consistent with state and national guidelines and no doubt helped reduce COVID-related deaths in our county. During these difficult times for all of us, she does not deserve criticism from Commissioners but their support and reliance on her medical expertise. Dr. and Mrs. David M. Lamazne. We are writing this letter in response to your efforts to possibly discipline or terminate Dr. Annette Mercantant. As the St. Clair County Medical Health Officer, we appreciate and wholeheartedly support her policies to mitigate the health threats imposed by COVID-19 in our community. It is disappointing to see her challenged repeatedly by a divisive audience in these trying, polarizing times. We strongly encourage you to maintain support of her and her roles for our community. This is from Jim, excuse me, Jim Frank from Birchville. I submit a letter in support of Dr. Annette Mercantant, our County Health Officer. Her work is crucial for the health and well-being of the community. Her directors, her directives have been sound, are based on science, as well as empirical evidence, and are reasonable. Though a segment of our county's population has been vocal in our opposition to the mandates, her office had it issued. These mandates are for the health of all citizens in the county, even those who claim otherwise. What disturbs me is that we have county board members who have engaged in a constant attack on her office and her conduct, which, given the circumstances, has been dignified and honest. The attacks against her are not warranted or worthy of extended debate. Not one single complaint or criticism leveled against her or her office has been substantiated by any legitimate study. Vaccines for COVID work. Recent studies related to masking demonstrates that masks not only check the spread of COVID, but if worn properly, protect the wearer as well. Her mandates for quarantine, masking, and vaccines are all supported by science. What it comes down to, plain and simple, is that some of our Commissioners are afraid of a vocal group of citizens in our county who are misinformed and angry that they have been instructed to behave in ways that protect the health of their fellow citizens. Of course, we have a minority of Commissioners who have supported Dr. Mercantant and have resisted the actions of the Commissioner who seeks to punish and fire her. I thank them. Nevertheless, the effort to render her office useless in the face of this epidemic is not based on any belief that is supported by truth and integrity. These Commissioners' actions are instead rooted in their fear of losing a segment of voters in upcoming election. The action of those outraged by our actions and the acquiescence of certain board members who have proposed to fire the county health official are nothing more than pure politics. Despite the claim of these benighted voters, they are the ones who have made this a political issue and continue to stoke conflict in order to move Commissioners who lack the will to stand up to their baseless claims. Dr. Mercantant knew that her orders would be unpopular and had the courage to issue them despite the consequences she might face. I would be grateful to see Commissioners have the same courage to support her orders, her role as county health officer, and resist the noisy ignorance of those who oppose sound measures to combat COVID. Go ahead.
My name is Patty Samar, and I'm a resident of the city of Port Huron. I'm the editor and publisher of Blue Water Woman Magazine. This year, in honor of the 10th anniversary of the publication and our annual Women of the Year Awards program, we decided to give out a new and very special award. I'd like to introduce to you the 2022 Blue Water Woman of the Decade, Dr. Annette Mercantant. Dr. Mercantant earned this award because no one person has made a bigger, more positive impact on the lives of residents in our county over the past decade, or century for that matter. And you want to fire her or slap her on the wrist and require that she follow a deeply flawed communications plan that would impede her ability to respond to a public health crisis with any sense of urgency? And finally, you are threatening to censure her for doing her job as directed by the state public health code. And you all know this is wrong, every single one of you. And why are you in this position? Because you allow a small but loud group of citizens to hijack the county board meetings and disrupt the business of running our government. You are threatening to take these actions in order to appear strong to those who show up at these meetings and oppose the authority given to Dr. Mercantant by state law, but instead of allowing her to implement good public health policy, you are weakening it. I understand that these are unprecedented times, and they put a lot of pressure on all of you, and I do appreciate your service. But you have big decisions to make at every meeting, and quite frankly, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. But guess what? Dr. Mercantant makes even bigger decisions every single day of her working life, and she does it in order to protect all of you who are interested in firing her, and she does it to protect all of the unmasked and unvaccinated people in our community every day. They can't stand her, they get angry with her, and yet she does everything in her power to try and keep them safe and to save their lives. Clearly, to Dr. Mercantant, public health is a calling and not a job. So I ask the seven of you at the table tonight, or the six of you, I suppose, to pick up your purses and strap on your high heels and demonstrate true leadership. Stand up to the bullies in the community and leave the good doctor alone. If you are making decisions because you are afraid of losing an upcoming election, fear not. Dr. Mercantant is supported in our community by a large, silent majority, and I think tonight we've had more than 35 letters read. Thank you. If that fear is driving your decision-making, you need to remember why you were elected to office in the first place. You were elected to make difficult decisions, not to cower to abandon bullies. You want to be leaders? Demonstrate some true leadership. Let Dr. Mercantant do the job she is legally obligated to do, and do not allow our county to be run by the weak. Thank you.
I wasn't really planning to speak tonight. My wife put my name down so I could yield my time to her, which I guess I'll have to do when we get home. But I couldn't sit here and listen to everything that was said without offering a couple of things. One, I think we could, we could talk about masks and we can talk about vaccines and argue about that till the last cow comes home in Santa Lac County, and it's not going to move the needle one way or another over what we think or what our, our opinions already are. But I do think we have to look at what's happened within the Health Department in Mark, in, in Santa Lac, or St. Clair County, sorry. And my point is that I've, I've had the opportunity to work with health departments and the medical community outside medical community outside of St. Clair County. As a new resident to, relatively new resident to St. Clair County, having moved here in 2015, I can't tell you how impressed I am with the work of the St. Clair County Health Department. I had the opportunity to work at several of the vaccine clinics that the health department put on, and the employees were committed, they were compassionate, they were very competent in what they were doing. And in my opinion and my experience, those types of attributes begin with strong leadership at the top. And that's what I think Dr. Merkentant has done over the last decade or so that she's been in her position. I fully support her 100% in the work that she's done. I think she's done an exceptional job in trying to maintain the health of all of the citizens of St. Clair County. I know you have some decisions to make, and you're probably going to make some votes that some people are not going to be happy about, probably including myself. And maybe all the hay is in the barn on those votes, and those have already been decided. But I think if you look at what's taking place in St. Clair County with the health department, censuring the leadership of that organization, publicly disciplining her, and looking at other ways that maybe policy could be done to communicate with the board, I think it's shaky public policy perhaps, and I do think there is a potential for you setting precedents that maybe come back to this board that's going to be regrettable and to boards in the future. So, thank you.
Stephanie Cogill.
Well, I am a frustrated parent. I am a frustrated teacher, although I am very thankful that the masks were able to come off the kids that I do teach, preschool special educators. I'm a special educator. I teach kids with disabilities, kids who already come to me behind. I have a son now diagnosed with anxiety and mild depression. I didn't seek that advice from our public health officer or health director. I had to go see my family doctor. I'm frustrated as a parent that I feel like I'm told I'm being bullied, I'm a bully because of the way I believe. These people didn't have consequences of having a public health order placed on them. Our children did. Our educators did. So if we think, I don't even begin to know how, I'm sorry, I'm so frustrated. I don't even know where to start as a parent and frustrated because of that, that our kids have been targeted. They have beautiful faces, and we're covering those faces up. I'm trying to collect my thoughts, and really, really, really sorry, and I've been, I feel though, as any of you who are business people, would, if someone in your purview messed up, you would talk with them, you would have it written up, but I really do feel like at this point in time, when the supervisor and the employee did not have communication or great communication, that in time should result in disciplinary action. It happens in almost every place of employment. So as a parent, I speak from frustration, and I'm trying not to. As an educator, I'm trying not to speak from frustration, but this was a targeted group of people, and I want you to think about that when you're making your decision for censure, because as parents, we're frustrated. So, thank you for your time.
Linda, and I can't read your last name.
It's Lorero.
Lorero, Linda Lorero. Thank you.
I just want to say something about bullying. I'd like us all to pull together. The United States Supreme Court a while back, in a seminal case of the New York Times, said the debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. Guess what? Criticism of their official conduct does not lose its constitutional protection merely because it's effective criticism and hence diminishes their official reputations. So I just wanted to throw that out. And I have something to say about statistics, and I have something to say about science. I don't worship science. I worship the Lord Jesus Christ. I worship God. Our rights come from God and not the government. That's what our nation was originated on. And as far as statistics go, if you look at the CDC site, it says that this virus was never even isolated under an electron microscope, which means it doesn't even bend proof to exist. What does exist is statistics full of fraud, illegitimate, does not prove anything at all. Let's use common sense and not science, and let's put God back in this nation.
This is from Eric Isaacson, Commander, United States Navy, retired. I fully support the informed and educated decisions and continued employment of Dr. Annette Merkentant, MDMPH, as the St. Clair County Medical Health Officer. The Board of Commissioners and the citizens of the county have entrusted Dr. Merkentant to make hard decisions in matters of public safety, sometimes unpopular ones, utilizing her vast professional medical experience in public health. These hard decisions are her decisions to be made, not the Board of Commissioners looking for an unsportsmanlike trick play to avoid making a hard decision themselves. Just like her, the Board needs to make hard decisions and support the people qualified to make decisions. Let her do her job. She holds the expertise and years of medical experience that no members of the Board hold. Do your job and support her and her challenging decisions, not just the popular ones. Anyone in a public safety position has extremely challenging decisions to make daily in the support of public safety, not political gamesmanship. Decisions in healthcare cannot be popular at all times. It is her decision, not the Board of Commissioners, to make. I encourage the Board to actually listen to professionals, make hard, science-based decisions using professional, peer-reviewed journal information, and stand up for those at risk from COVID and support our educated, public health official. Per her position description, Annette acts in the interest of public safety, the care and well-being of all of St. Clair County residents, including the elderly, the sickly, and in support of our drained and physically and emotionally scarred healthcare workers in the field. I encourage the Board to listen to those few who have survived the worst of COVID, their families, and the direct care nurses in our healthcare facilities, not just the ignorant angry mob. Please listen to the facts. Masks and vaccines save lives. See the attached professional, peer-reviewed journal article on the significant positive impact of masks in schools. Stop listening to those looking for an easy fix or those trying to avoid a slight inconvenience. The loudest voices are typically not utilizing COVID facts. Go visit any county COVID ward, our emergency rooms, and listen to the voices of families of those hospitalized by COVID. Better yet, go visit the graves of the voices silenced by COVID. This is from Lori Lamont. I'm a St. Clair County resident and wants to voice my support for our health department and especially our medical health officer, Dr. Annette Merkentant. Without her knowledge and guidance over the past two years, I can only imagine how much more long-term illness and death would have occurred in our county. Asking students or even adults to wear a mask is a small request considering the risk of spreading a potentially deadly virus by not wearing one out in public. Dr. Merkentant is only looking out for our welfare and not trying to inconvenience anyone or impinge on our human rights. We all have the right to be healthy and alive. While people believe that things are better, COVID is here to stay, and we will continue to need the guidance from our trained medical professionals, not opinions from people that want to downplay a pandemic and act like things are normal and they won't get sick or even die from a virus. It is foolish to believe that you may not die from a virus no matter what age you are. We have seen healthy young adults die from the horrible virus. The past two years have been plagued with uncertainty, worry, fear, illness, and death because of a pandemic caused by the coronavirus. Without the health department completing testing, administering COVID-19 vaccines, and providing guidance to our communities, I'm sure that our death rate would be much higher. These professionals have been a godsend to our community, and they need, they deserve our total support. Please share my email with the commissioners. This is from Christine Gorzen from St. Clair, Michigan. I've known Dr. Annette Merkentant for 30 years. She is always kind, caring, and extremely intelligent. She was put in a position to make intelligent decisions for our county, which she has done. To say that she needs to be disciplined for a job well done is extremely insulting to her intelligence and others in the medical community. These bully tactics are political and only hurt the health of citizens in our county. I stand behind her and her decisions and would hope that the health of our community is more important than giving in to bully tactics. This is from Mary Powell. I am concerned that the censor of Dr. Merkentant will be dismissed now that she has dropped the mask mandate on our children in schools. I am hoping that the commissioners continue with the censor for several reasons. If I, as an employee, continue to do something that my superiors have asked me not to do, I would be written up and disciplined. If she is not disciplined for her past actions, she will have the ability to do it again and again and again. While I understand that within her titles she has the ability to write these mandates, she was asked on more than one occasion to express the need of the mandates to her employers, the commissioners. She did not again. I am also hoping that you are still reviewing her positions and her contract. Dr. Merkentant and her staff still continue to censor the community that she is supposed to protect. She is still making her own rules based on the ideas that we are in a state of emergency, which we have not been in for a long time. We are one of two counties in Michigan that has one person filling both positions within the health department. This needs to go back to two people, not one making the health choices for the 160,000 people in this community. While at the beginning of the endemic, Dr. Merkentant did what was expected and required. She is now taking it to a new level. She does not provide the science that her and her team are following. She does not respond to anyone who questions her science, and she is not looking at any of the ongoing scientific proof that does not follow her agenda. For instance, John Hopkins released a study that shows that the lockdowns did not help stop the spread of the deaths. Many studies are being put out that masks do not help the spread. Only N95 may slow the spread if worn properly. Recently, Dr. Merkentant took upon herself to do an interview with Blue Water Healthy Living, stating that the real issue is that there is a vocal and passionate group of people who oppose this type of infectious disease intervention, and our commissioners were deluged with calls and letters demanding retractions and information that they felt ill-prepared to answer, criticizing the commissioners once again in a public way. Once again, without providing any science behind her decisions, whereas a vocal and passionate group of people are more than willing to provide the research, science, and studies. The problem here is that Dr. Merkentant feels that she should not be questioned and should not be held responsible for any actions she takes because of her title. Please post her position, please change the contract, and please hold her responsible for her actions. If she cannot accept that, then she should not be in a position that holds her to certain standards, and she should go back to private practice where she can make her own decisions. That's the final one. Thank you.
Don Schaefer. Don Schaefer.
I work with COVID patients. I wear a N95 mask. I'm in the trenches with COVID people all the time. I just have some notes I've jotted down, listening to people writing in. Science, science is coming up a lot. What science are we talking about? Because Dr. Merkentant has not really given us her science and what she's following. Are we following Fauci? The no-mask, oh, wear masks, now two masks, oh, a cloth mask doesn't work? The science keeps changing, and we are not following it anyways. Comirnaty, you mentioned that you'd not heard it. I've brought it up in past discussions. Comirnaty is the FDA-approved vaccine that is not even being produced yet. So yeah, there's no vaccine, if you want to call it that, that's actually being produced that's FDA-approved. All of these are still emergency use. And a 40% positivity rate in our area, where is that coming from? Because that would be four out of 10 people. Am I right math-wise, four out of 10? Do you know four out of 10 people every day that are positive with COVID? Because I don't, and I work skilled nursing care center, and we have nurses that are double vax boosted, they're all coming now with COVID. Deaths in hospitals? There are a lot of deaths in hospitals because they're not using the medications that actually work early on with COVID care. They're giving remdesivir, which has been shown in early trials with Ebola trials. It was pulled because it killed 53% of the people. And now Fauci has resurrected it to be brought on for COVID treatment, and it kills 57% of the people over 80 are killed by it. 47% are killed under 80. My mom was one of them. My mom had COVID. She tested positive with her tests, which I don't trust because I have coworkers that have been tested positive, sent to PCR, came back inconclusive three times before he finally got a negative result. How effective are these tests? So, and as far as Merkentant's professionalism, consider the threats that she threw at all our doctors in this area, that if they wrote mask exemptions for our children, that they would lose their license. How professional is that?
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard? Moving on, any updates?
At least, I just got a quick one. I just want you to take note on our agenda, and it's going to come up later in our Ways and Means Committee. We're looking at changing the meeting time for our next meeting, which is going to be on the 17th. The reason is, is they have the MTA, which is the Michigan Township Association, which all the commissioners represent, different townships, and it's an opportunity for us to get in front of our township representation. I'm not exactly sure what's going to happen with the timeframe, but I want to let everybody know, because if you do leave, I don't want to be accused of that we're trying to pull a fast one on you, that we are trying to, you know, change the meeting, so on and so forth. So please take note of that. That's going to be coming up in our meeting, in the Ways and Means, and it'll be published.
I could add, there's 23 townships within St. Clair County, 31 total municipalities. This is an annual meeting that they have held for the 23 townships to meet with our county commissioners and other elected officials. A road commissioner will be there with that. So we do do this annually, and it is an important meeting to meet with the Michigan Township Association, and they set aside February 17th for that.
Any other updates?
It's a dinner, you can buy a ticket and show up.
Item five. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close session at the request of the public health officer.
Gary, can you explain a little bit of that, please?
Yes, under the--
Gary, you gotta eat that, Mike.
Oops. Under the Michigan Open Meetings Act, there are certain things that permit a closed session. It's section 8, one of the Open Meetings Act, and it says to consider dismissal, suspension, disciplining, or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public employee, staff member, et cetera. It says if the name individual requests a closed hearing and Dr. Merkentant sent an email to Ms. Hepting requesting the closed hearing.
You had a motion?
I'll make that motion. No, we have a motion, we have support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We should run a roll call to go into closed session.
Okay.
Sorry. Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Okay, moving to closed.
We will be back out shortly. We will be back out shortly.
Entertained a motion to open the meeting back up?
So moved.
Who is that?
It's moved and seconded.
Done.
I'll be above.
Jeff, phone.
Do you mean, uh?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any conceptual initiatives tonight?
None this evening.
Old business?
Isn't this where we would talk about the committees? The three-person committee, their findings or information?
It is new business 8A. It's on the agenda.
Okay.
So new business 8A, medical health officer censure letter.
Make a motion. Do we got to open up for discussion, right? Isn't that what we're doing?
Yeah, so there's a motion.
I'll support.
So the three-person committee met last week. It's all running together on me. And we talked about, we reviewed the draft of the censure letter, which we had asked Carrie to put together for us. We reviewed a draft of the communication plan. And we also looked at some updated information related to the position itself and getting some understanding around what that would, what that could look like if that is the way that we went. I think the thing that I learned that stood out the most in that conversation is that even if the roles are separated, the public health officer still holds all the power according to the Michigan statute. So one person would still make health directive orders. The power still lies with one person, even if the position is split.
So it does not lie with the medical director's position, then it's the public health director?
Correct.
Does anybody have any idea why so many other areas used to?
Well, do you want to?
I can speak to that. I think in most of our research, it's very unique to find the qualifications for both positions are very specific and they are outlined by the state of Michigan. And any candidate you choose before appointment must actually be approved by the state of Michigan as well. So to find someone that possesses the qualifications and the desire to hold both positions is not very common. Most, many medical doctors don't have the public health or the MPH, the administrative piece of it, and experience to hold the public health officer position. They're just the medical piece of it. And not many public health officers are physicians. So there's not a lot of people that possess the qualifications of both positions as they're required by statute.
Thank you.
Well, so I'd like to jump into the censorship conversation a little bit. So Annette did call me on regarding, you know, looking at potentially doing the order. I'd called her and she talked to the school, so on and so forth. She specifically asked me, how should I communicate with the commissioners? I said, if you want, send them an email, right? I think a lot of this surrounds that some of the commissioners are upset that they did not receive a phone call, that they would have liked a phone call. But she was working, I guess, under my directive. So when you ask who county officials were that made this call, not that I, not that I agree to the decision, not that any of that other stuff, but to tell her to email the commissioners and let them know, that, that lies on me, okay? I'm not skirting that issue. So I just want to be open with that. After I sat down with Annette and went through, as I think a lot of the commissioners got an opportunity to see the timelines and whom she met with at what time. There's going to be 20 people on that list, right? I mean, it's a lengthy list of whom she communicated with and whom she had talked about. Could we do a better job with communication? I would be the first one to tell you that I've been fairly off hands with a lot of this stuff as board chair. Should I be more involved in sitting in these rooms? I'm not a doctor by any stretch. I think we have a medical group, a team of different individuals. Again, I'm not telling you I agree with the decisions that are coming out of there because a lot of times I don't. But I also am not sitting in those rooms. Does that lay on me? Perhaps. As many of you know, I spend a lot of my time on these bricks and mortar projects. Gary and I were in a meeting today for three hours working on a major, major, major corporation that are located here in Sinclair County. I'm really good at that. I am really not good at some of these other things. And so if there's an issue with that, I have to take some of the brunt for this, so.
If I could, Jeff, because I did serve on the committee. Dave's not here to, at his endpoint, there was three of us in there. And I think we've kind of really talked about having the positions put out. So this is what we talked about. I got other things to say about what happened. But in regards to the position, we have one or two within the state that have a single officer. Is it one or two, Carrie?
I, I think it's two, but I don't know that for sure. I think there might be two.
There's 54, 55 total, I believe, in that vicinity anyways, for covering all 83 counties because some counties overlap. What Greg brought up at the last meeting, we discussed that during the committee meeting. And also Dave Vanderbusch shared with me that the one position is minimum, or minimum 16 hours a week. The positions will cover roughly $200,000. Currently, it's in that ballpark. It could cost us $20,000 to $30,000 above and beyond. Correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, if we did go to two positions.
So the two positions, when we do the wage analysis like we do for any positions, the medical director position, the wages varied greatly. Anywhere from an annual of $60,000 upwards of $200,000. And in all cases, that 200, that $186,000 was for 20 hours a week for a part-time employee.
And I want to give, you guys did a lot of, a lot of research. So we have, you can throw out the high county, which is the 200,000, and you can throw out the 60,000. But I think it's going to roughly come out to about 200,000, plus or minus a little bit to hold both positions. And we're just around 200,000 for the one. So it could be a 10% to 15% increase if we were to put it up for bid. Talking with Dave Vanderbosch, he said that for a 16-hour position, he thinks we can get 30 applicants for that to get $100,000 to work 16 hours a week. Whether that's true or not, and the applicants would have the qualifications, we don't know that unless we do it. And that was discussed at our meeting. And same thing with the other position, to have another person overseeing rather than just one person. So if we don't investigate that part of this position, Dr. Merkentant is more than capable of applying for both positions again. It may very well end up that. If we don't get some type of research, I don't think we're doing our job as county commissioners prior to the renewal of our contract in June. We may very well renew it anyways. And that's a decision of this board. But if we don't do our homework to find out if there's anybody qualified, we might find out that nobody wants the job. We might find out that we have 20 for each job that want it. But without doing our job, at least putting it out there, we won't know that. So that was part of the committee. I have other things to say about what happened, but I wanted to fill you more in what happened in the committee. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me or Lisa, specifically what might have happened in the committee.
Well, I had sent some, some questions earlier just so, you know, people could be prepared. I think first and foremost, we're on A, which was just the censure letter. But the parts of my questions were on that. We at least had the backup with the letter for item B. We didn't have any kind of information to go on. So is, are these agenda items, did those all come out of the review committee? And then did the review committee go over the, you know, the censure letter and, and/or the communication plan? Because, you know, in the memo, it's, you could adopt one, you could adopt both, you could only adopt.
We have three, and Carrie, interrupt me if I'm incorrect, Lisa, but Carrie produced three documents for us. One was the censure letter, one was communication, and one is communication policy. The two following letters would cover the emergency manager and our health director because they're in a specific position and statutory duties that we have no authority to stop them from doing their job and we shouldn't have any. And this whole discussion about, in my opinion, I'm going to give you my opinion, that this wasn't about her doing her job and doing her statutory duty. This is how this came about, in my opinion, in subordination, not contacting us. And I guess I'll add there, in regards to the mask, this came up in the meeting. She said she communicated with everybody, but that she discussed a mask mandate or thought about it for three months. A mask mandate would be very easy to say, here's what potentially may happen.
We can't, we can't talk about what we talked in the closed session.
I'm not talking, I never talked about that in a closed session.
I think, I think he's expressing his opinions on the censure letter, which he can express before y'all get ready to vote. And I think Dr. Merkentant should also have an opportunity to address it before you vote on that.
That's how this came about in discussions from the last time during the quarantine. And if you want to go to the meeting, I made specifically that. I kept my mouth pretty quiet about what we want to talk about and asked Gary Fletcher for his legal opinion of things that we could and could not discuss in that meeting. Outside of open meetings. So to say I discussed that, you know I didn't discuss that in a meeting and I wouldn't discuss that in a meeting.
I'm sorry if you feel insulted. I take it back. I apologize. Please continue.
Well, you know, this is a, an issue that has gotten people from both sides. The one gentleman, I think he left, he actually came up here and didn't take sides. He made a very good speech. I, I thought that what a lot of people should do. And so this has been very divisive. Things would have been handled better. I don't think this would have happened. So if, if things would have been done different, so.
Say that's your question. I mean, sort of, so the idea from the censure, because I'm not in the review committee meeting, right? So the idea from the censure letter, because here's what I can tell you. I feel like we have some, we've had some successes. We've had some, some issues. So from my perspective, last fall, there was a mandate issued. It was, you know, it kind of, we felt kind of blindsided. We said, next time this comes up, let's please have a discussion about it so that we know how to talk to constituents. We know how to talk to the residents about this. I took that to mean that should something come up, because it's, it's under the public health code under a, an emergency order, that we wouldn't have a tremendous amount of time maybe to talk about this. But there would be some kind of, hey, this is what's coming down. I didn't want you to hear it on Facebook. I needed, you know, here, here, do you have any questions about it? How can I help you? And in that aspect, then we can help the health department by saying, here's how I understand it to be. So I think that's how I walked away from that. I don't know that that was the perception of maybe Dr. Merkentant or that, yes, I'd call you before it happened, you'd know before anyone else. So I don't know that that happened, but none of us talked about it in between. So the next time it came up in kind of an emergency situation, I think we were on different pages. And so, and I think since then, I think parts of talking about how to communicate what the expectation is from our side, what the expectation is from Dr. Merkentant's side, has come kind of full circle. And now I think we, we are all on the same page. But I don't believe that we were by December, between the fall and December, unless the expectation of someone on this board was that you would be asked permission essentially to issue it, right? Otherwise, letting us know prior to it going out, I think, was the shared perception.
I, I would stress for every one of us, at least the way I would look at it, I would not want any one of our health directors to ever ask for permission to do their job. But to inform the elected officials, I think that's mandatory to elect us prior to, what's the timeframe? She has enough knowledge, enough years on the job to know if a mask mandate was going to be put in place. This is what I might be looking at in a month if the numbers go up. If she says that she didn't have that information, I would not believe her. Because you do have that information. We get to see this information every single day. You can look it up on the CDC. There's so many. If you want to find it, it's on the internet. And I believe they have the information. She could have said that this potentially may happen. And at least then we would have had some, maybe some input. We could have contacted the school boards. I had a call with the president of Yale School Districts today. He called me. He said that he's had 10 cases of COVID. I don't know if she can verify that or not, but he's had 50 students drop out because of the mask mandate. That might be a farther detriment to our students than wearing masks or not wearing masks. I don't know. But if we would have had that, we could have done some of our own research. What's in the best interest of our kids? And I brought up about our grand, my granddaughter in Memphis school. They had a competition for cheerleaders last Thursday night. 800 people in the gym. Not one person was wearing a mask. That's their choice. But Memphis High School has chosen not to wear masks. They just don't do it, even though the mask mandate requires it. Now, every school district is going to be different. We did that as county commissioners, drafted a resolution to leave it up to them. And correct me on this too, because, I mean, everybody's wound up. I'm a bit wound up on this. The school districts have zero authority to enforce her mask mandate. If she's going to do, and she came on record instead that she is not going to enforce it, you need to have something in place that you can go, if the school district says this particular school, school student is not going to be there. They cannot suspend him. They cannot give him a verbal warning. They cannot expel him on account of her mask mandate. They have to call her up and have her enforce it. Each individual school district can put their own mask mandate in place like Algenack Port here in Northern did for Port here in school districts. like Algonquin, Port Huron Northern did, for Port Huron School Districts, to where, and I'm not sure the specifics of it, but they could have had a verbal warning, a suspension, and expulsion at each individual school district. The school districts have zero authority, if they have somebody non-compliance, they can't force them to wear a mask. They got to call her office, have her come out, and do the enforcing. That's the way I interpret it. I asked you about this, Carrie. So...
Well, and to back up, I, I agree with you that I would prefer that the mask mandates be left to the districts, because they're all very different. Okay, that, and I talked to Dr. Merkentant. Past that, though, I'm also not a doctor, and I'm not a school administrator. So my interpretation was that the schools and the public health director got together and said, I know how to run a school. And she said, and I know about the medical part. And they asked each other for help. That's how I understood it when it came out. So I guess my question to you, though, is if we're talking about a censure, is your, I'm hearing two different things. So you don't, or the mask mandate, or putting in a mandate, you were, she was asked not to, and it happened. But is the censure is based on not communicating with the commissioners? So what, what part would have been different, because we, we did know prior, but are you saying you would have wanted to have had this conversation, know what those metrics were a month prior?
Right. Two separate issues. She's got to do her duty, or whoever's in that position, to their director statutorily to protect the residents of this county. The, in my opinion, the insubordination, whatever that position is, whoever is in that position, she needs to communicate with us, because we're the elected officials. She didn't do that, in my opinion. By saying that she thought about the mask mandate for three months, and to let me know two hours before it actually happened, I have to report to who put me in office. I could have easily talked to her and said, why don't we look at this and saying, can you do it this way? Or every one of us, every school superintendent, some of them got blindsided, and some of the school boards. If you would have had a mask mandate, or whatever potential mandate that the statutory duty of her is, here's potentially in the future what may happen, depending on the numbers that come in, then we can communicate, we can communicate with whoever's in that, sitting in that seat. We can get behind her and support her, or him, whoever's in that position. We were given that opportunity. She said she'd do it. In my opinion, she didn't do it. So the whole censure letter has to do with, in my opinion, insubordination by not doing it, because she said she would do it publicly, and she didn't do it. And I have a big issue with that. What happens if it happens again? We are blindsided. Well, ah, it's the same thing. She's doing her duty, no censure letter. At what point is a censure letter sufficient to put on somebody's record as an employee? So we're not here because of what we did. We're here because of what she did. And she knew what, she's been in this position a long time. Please, we're, we're doing a meeting here. We, she's been there for 10 years. She knows how to do her job. To not include us in the conversation, and many of the school districts, I can go through this. Say she communicated with everybody, giving somebody information that a mask mandate's going to be put in place. You can call it communication. I call that just informing them what I'm going to do. Because some of these conversations were one minute. How do you talk to a superintendent of a school and talk for one minute about something that's going to affect that many kids? I mean, that's a separate discussion. I don't think we needed to get here. So this doesn't hold a whole lot of water with me as far as communication. This is just informing people what I'm, or she's going to be doing. And it's her statutory duty. I'm not going to argue that point. I'm saying the communication wasn't there, and she said she'd do it.
Thanks. Any other questions or discussions?
Well, I think we have a, if I could, Lisa, we have, and I got, none of us want to have to do the censure. Do we have to do it? That's each one of us have to make a decision. Carrie presented three things, and here's where I'm standing right now. We could have a motion to send it to the full board or take final action tonight. My position, and we can continue the discussion. The second two letters, the one for communication and one for policy for the emergency manager and her, I would very happily make a motion to accept those for final action tonight, or send it to the full board, whatever this board decides. As far as the censure letter, I definitely support that, and I, I'm not sure that it would get supported to go forward. But I don't know if we can keep those two separate or not, or put them all at, all at one.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You made a motion, and it was supported. What was that for?
Censure letter.
Censure letter. So I think you got to, and, and I think before you vote on that, you got to decide whether it's final action, or, or you just revisit all this again in whatever, two or three weeks.
If I could ask you, on that motion, does that include the other two letters that Carrie included with those?
I was just focusing on the censure letter right now. If we want to, I guess, make a mo, if, see where the censure letter goes. If it doesn't, then if there's a communication plan that you want, we want to vote on, we...
I, if there's a, if we can vote on the censure letter, see where that goes. If that doesn't, if it goes, so be it. If it doesn't, then we can talk about the communication plan.
Is it final action, or to send it to the board?
I'm fine with final action. I don't know what the, what's the flavor of the board is.
Yeah, you made the motion.
Uh, let's, let's start with the final action on the, I'll already send my motion for, final action for the censure letter.
So before we call for the vote, is this the opportunity we would give Dr. Merkentant to address us?
Yeah, that's what she would, if she wants to address it, obviously before it happens, she has the right to do that in a public meeting.
Thanks, you guys. And I do have comments about both the censure letter and the communication plan. So would you like me to just comment on the censure right now?
Yeah, you can talk about both of them.
Okay, yeah, I'm here. So we object to the censure. I think it's very clear that there's many of us who felt we did what the right thing for us to do, be it unpopular, be it contrary to the political climate. The decision was not made solely by me, and I'll just say, our team at the health department is phenomenal. And although we knew there was going to be an escalation of cases, we did not know of some trigger point where a mask order was going to be considered. That discussion came up, as I mentioned before, the day before the order was written, as we contemplated caseload, hospital load, testing supplies, and a whole, as, as I mentioned in, in the explanation. So I just want to, on record to say that I believe our, our decision was sound. It was difficult. We knew it was going to be difficult. And since the censure is for communication, I'll just go back to the fact that the communication was done in good faith, and I followed the instructions provided to me by your chair. And thank you, Jeff, for being honest about that, because I made a great deal of effort to make sure everyone was aware before we even decided to draft the order. So if you want more than that for communication, I need something back from all of you. I need that communication from all of you to understand where you're coming from, what you don't understand. Because I really did put an effort into this in good faith, and I do not consider it insubordination, because I spent 24 hours calling people and talking to people about this. So that's my opposition to the censure. My opposition to the communication plan is very similar to that. I think public health code is very clear that a health officer needs to be able to issue urgent orders and, and matters of life and death. Now, this wasn't quite that urgent, but there's obviously an urgency to this. We had schools opening up on a Monday after a long holiday weekend, and the county was closing on, on Wednesday. And if we didn't issue that order then, it wouldn't have been able to get out in time. Schools wouldn't have known about it, et cetera, et cetera. So there was an urgency to this, and that's why we do it that way. And I've mentioned as well that that communication piece can be improved on if we had have been communicating ahead of time. The fact that we're going to try and communicate after the fact, after a decision's been made, shackles public health, and I, quite honestly, creates a risk to the community that we wouldn't be able to do our job. And so I think the communication plan is lacking that component of our ability to move quickly with emergencies, and it's lacking the component, quite honestly, of the board's responsibility to communicate to us, and for us to understand what you need. Explanations of the orders are in the orders. There is a full preamble that includes data and the explanation for why those orders were issued. Now, it's not all-inclusive or comprehensive, but as far as talking points are concerned, we believe you had it in your hands when we issued it. So those are my opinions, and I believe I reflect the opinions of my entire agency, not to mention the fact that it seems, I don't know the word here, for the work that we have done, and the integrity that we have done this work over the last couple of years, the extensive hours, the worry, the extreme gravity of the decisions we're making on a daily basis, to be chastised for something like this, is humiliating and disrespectful in my, in my mind. So that's where we stand. And I just want to mention, I, I can't leave without saying this. There is COVID fatigue. We're tired. You're tired. This is difficult, painful for everyone. And I just want to say that I think a lot of this has to do with the grief that we're all feeling in this community. People are grieving their children not going to school in a normal way. Many people are grieving the death of loved ones, grieving jobs. Everyone, including myself, is dealing with grief over these last two years. And the elements of grief are all experienced and expressed differently by people. Some people grieve by denial, by anger. Some people grieve by bargaining and trying to kind of come up with alternative solutions. There is depression. And ultimately, with grief, there's acceptance and hope and the ability to find joy. And what I'm asking for all of us in the community around us is that we reach some kind of consensus that we need to move through this grief together as a community, and stop fighting each other over our various aspects of how we want to express this grief, and acknowledge that everyone is suffering with this. And I do want to say that, quoting Martin Luther King, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." And this is a time of challenge and controversy. Your health department, the health department I have proudly led, because I've never had such a talented team to work with, they demonstrate that where we stand and where we intend to stand and that, where we are in times of controversy, we have held strong with what we believe was the right thing to do, whether people disagreed with us or not. And our mission and our vision is to be the trusted local public health experts in our community, and to promote and protect public health so that people can achieve their ultimate well-being. That's what we do. That's what we were doing when we did this. And I do not believe any of that warrants a censure. Thank you.
So that leads, that leads me into the next question, I guess.
Did you get a censure, I mean, a second?
Just, so, so something we talked about, so communication plan, but then communication policy.
It's the same thing. It's just, it's a procedure or an expectation. It's, it's the same document.
Carrie, did you give her a copy of the communication letter?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Because she just stated that she's not going to follow any communication plan, because she's against it, and a communication letter. This is an employee to the county that even if we put a policy in effect, she's not going to follow it.
I did not hear her say she wasn't going to follow it. I heard her say that she had concerns with it. I, I, if that's what, I, that's not what I heard her say, is that she, she did not say she was not going to follow it, just she had some concerns with how it was written.
And to have a consensus together, we do need to be working together. This is a one-sided thing. That's why I'm looking at it.
We have a motion and support. Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the roll?
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
No.
Commissioner Beeden?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
No.
Commissioner Baldwin?
No.
Motion fails.
Item B, the public health officer position.
Are we done with that? Are we going to forward the other two communication forward?
To the full board.
Send that to the full board, the plan and the policy to the full board.
Okay, forward that up. Do you mean in a motion, forward that to the full board for next meeting?
It's not really on your agenda. That's a policy thing. You can see that, right?
It was part of item A. There was the censure letter, and then there was also a communication expectation that could be adopted in lieu of, or in addition to whatever the board chose.
I have a suggestion. If you send it to the full board, in the meantime, Dr. Merkentant can get with Carrie. Because what I heard the concerns were, if they needed to act immediately because of a crisis situation, they don't want to be prevented from doing that. And I don't think that was anybody, I know that wasn't your intent. So that can probably be easily corrected.
If that would be acceptable, I'd definitely have her look at it, have her concerns given to Carrie. And if we could draft that policy and the communication better for the emergency manager and herself, we definitely need to have the best policy and communication in place. So I definitely want her input and Justin's input.
Make that motion.
I'll make that motion to send that to the full board and get their input on it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are we ready for item B?
Yes.
Public health officer position.
I'll make a motion to forward that to the full board.
Support.
So, wait. Oh, motion support. Discussion?
Yeah.
What are we forwarding? So there was nothing attached to the agenda?
To potentially, just like the committee, like we explained, and we can do our conversation right now, like we explained that I did earlier, Lisa can add to it, or Carrie Hepting, for the two to have one position or two positions, and potentially send it out, because there's a timeframe here. If we make this decision at the end of February, their bare minimum, we're probably looking at the end of April, probably May, just prior to the contract coming up. And then we'll know in that timeframe if there's any potential people out there for position anyways.
So, so I think, and Georgia, correct me if I'm misunderstanding you, you would like something in writing, like a proposal or some sort of a recap, so you can compare apples to apples, so that we're all on the same page?
Right. I, I mean, it's, I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking me to vote on even tonight, except to maybe create the positions, because if, yeah.
Or is it to review?
I think, I think, I think I understood what he was saying is that the recommendation was that the positions be posted separately, and that a person could, you know, apply for one or both. So Dr. Merkentant could obviously reapply to be reappointed and have her contract.
Are we looking for that, or I'd like to get a little bit more informa, let Carrie do a little bit more information on what these two, okay.
That's why I said forward it to the full board. So we got three weeks to...
For, for, let Carrie get some more information. Here's what this would look like if it's, if we decide to split the positions. Here's the costs, here's pros and cons, so on and so forth.
So just for the sake of the notes, you're only moving it to the full board for the update and the discussion, not necessarily going to be a decision.
In three weeks.
Is that, am I understanding that right? Not necessarily a decision.
Not tonight. No final action tonight. Forward it to the full board in three weeks.
Okay.
So, so what are you asking me to bring back in two weeks? Just so, I mean, I know, Commissioner Rushing, you asked that this be put on the agenda, but I wasn't, you know, I was at the committee, I heard the discussions, but there was not really a consensus that I got from the committee of how you wanted to forward, or what recommendation you wanted me to put on the agenda. So would you just like to see the information, basically summarizing what's in the binder that I, that the committee has, or, or I guess, what does everybody want to see on the agenda?
I think...
Well, there was zero put on the, there was zero put on the agenda. I have, I don't have an issue with letting commissioners put stuff on the agenda, but to Georgia's point, we have zero information in front of us regarding this. So I guess give Carrie a little bit of, and, and I'm here in your direction, take a look, assemble some more information, maybe some things for the, for, and I don't even know if it would be necessarily an actionable item at the next one, or more for information, so we can take a look and talk about it.
So if we could see the...
The current information, as well as the new proposal?
Yeah. So if we could look at the position as it is today, and then have information for the positions, if they were to be split, and what that cost would be, so we know dollar for dollar either proposal. So we would have something to compare and discuss.
I think anytime you're at the end of a contract, it's probably a healthy time to look at it, to make sure everyone has, maybe Dr. Merkentant has ideas of how it should be structured to work better. What resources do they need? Should there be a deputy? All of these things that, I don't know if it got talked about in the review committee, but I guess some of my questions were, is this something that normally happens on a board of commissioner level? Because I, you know, I've not seen this. I've seen a contract just brought to us. And do you approve it or do not? So it sounds to me like we're restructuring. Generally, when we... Generally, when we see those things, it comes in the form of a manning table change or a proposal from a department head who, so, you know, I've got this position, I want to make it this position, this is how much it would cost. So the department head does an analysis, finance does an analysis, HR does an analysis. And so I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out where we are. Are we, is that what we're talking about? Or will we have that before next week? Or is it, are we going completely off the reservation, treating this a little differently and kind of creating our own within this board?
I don't want to have this talked about for the next two, three months up until June. If we're going to move forward, let's put things out for bid. If we're not, let the commissioners decide. No, we're not going to do it. And that's where I'm looking forward in three weeks. I think every one of us have the where-for-all, the call. Carrie, if you need any questions, answers, she gets you. The answers, you're more than welcome to my book. Everybody in the committee got one. And the, the finances, the comparables, the requirements for the directors.
So none of us have that information. So I just want to clarify. So if we could, if we could get copies of that, so we have the opportunity to review that.
Well, it's two weeks, isn't it? Or is there another week?
No, we're, we're not, he brought it up earlier, that we're not going to be meeting in two weeks because the MTA.
No, no, no. I was going to say we would probably be, you're, you're hearing aids aren't working tonight, David.
No, they're not.
I said we were going to talk about making, going, going earlier because of the MTA, moving our meeting up previous like we have before on that there, because you bring everybody in and then.
I, I could be.
So, right. So Commissioner Rushing, I think just my, my question goes back to if we, what exactly it is, there was nothing on the agenda item tonight. And I, I assume you put the agenda item tonight to just talk about the public health officer position?
Right.
Correct? So there wasn't a memo or any information? And I've never seen that book. So I guess that's what I'm asking.
What is new business eight B, public health officer position? That's this, isn't it?
I don't have that. I've never seen it. So I don't know.
I can give mine to Duke and Carrie can easily get you guys copies to where we can discuss this earlier rather than later. And that's what I would like to do.
Right.
And whether we take action at our next board meeting or not, or forward it to the next board meeting, once you get the information, so we can have a discussion. We can have it, either have it for final action next meeting, or the final action for meeting after that, or no action, whatever the board decides. But I do want to get this pushed forward, whether we're going to do it or not. I don't want this sitting around for the next six months or five months till June.
I think we all agree with you on that.
Right. We agree.
Yeah. But, but it wasn't part of the, so that could have been the attachment to this agenda item and it wasn't. So that's why I'm asking.
Fair enough.
So Carrie, can you get that information to the other commissioners?
Yep. We'll make sure everybody has a copy of the binder and then I will summarize it. So it's not the 200 pages as your agenda item.
Sure. Thank you.
So I have a, I have a motion to move to full board the discussion about the public health officer position.
Perfect.
Is there support?
Yeah, I think, yep, we got Rushing and, and.
Baldwin.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, contract approval request, Overdrive Inc.
I'll make a motion to send that to full board.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, resolution 2022-03, placing proposed renewal for St. Clair County senior village on ballot.
I have to make that motion because I'm the only senior citizen on this board up in the area.
Do you want us to both second it to get up to that age?
Support.
Speak for yourself. Together, we have to have our ages together.
So there was support. Any discussion?
Send it to full, full board. This, we can make a final action if you need to.
Don't need to.
No.
Okay, full board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, are there any other human services matters for tonight? Hearing none. Item 10, information only. We did receive the health department points of interest for January.
Motion to receive and file.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, motion adjourned.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Commissioner McConnell?
Here. I don't see any additions. If there are none, could we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
We have motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to be heard under judiciary and public safety? Seeing none. Any updates? None. Conceptual initiatives?
None.
Thank you. There is no old business. Under new business, contract approval for the Justice Works, this is for the public defender's office. It's a $17,250. And it went up $6,300 for 2022. It's for case management software.
Send to the full board.
Support.
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the next two, Mr. McMillan is here somewhere.
Yeah.
Oh, there he is. I, I would ask for a motion so we can bring it up to the table. So moved. Probate court manning table change?
Support.
We have motion in support. Mr. McMillan?
Sitting there a while. I'll hit you my giddy up here. Thank you very much. As you can see, there's two proposals. One is a probate court staffing change. There was a couple graphs there. I alluded to this last time. We were at the, we were discussing the Court of Point Attorney matter. We're kind of in a critical state with our probate court and getting things done. So we are respectfully requesting that a manning table change be done to transition a part-time to a full-time and a clerk one to a clerk three. Probate court has two clerk ones. It's the only department that we have that has that. We have a clerk three, excuse me, a clerk one who's doing clerk three work. We had an evaluation done to the human resource department and they agreed that, that we should have this done. This is the first time that we've approached the board for any use of a contingency. We did work with our finance director. We had initially proposed some changes to the childcare fund because we do have a big balance there, but we were informed that that would not be an option. So we did look at our day treatment program and unfortunately had to eliminate two positions. One was a part-time custodian, one was a part-time at-risk youth worker. While we would not really like to eliminate these positions, we feel that the need in the probate court far surpasses those, those positions. So there's analysis from the, from the finance department, analysis from the human resource department, both supporting what we're looking to have done here. We're respectfully requesting that that transition be approved in the probate court. The second matter is the referee. We have a juvenile referee who is significantly underpaid for, for what that person's doing. We have domestic relations referees who are doing the same amount of work, actually less. Our juvenile referee does about 3,000 or 3,600 hearings a year. Our domestic relations referees do about 1,600. So she's, she's doing much more than, than, than what her wage does suggest. So we're asking that be, that be brought up to the amount that our friend of court referees are making. And there's a support from our HR department as well. I would entertain any questions on that? Anybody have any questions?
Oh, he's been here three hours. Nobody has a question?
I did have some good clam chowder at freighters if you guys were looking.
Thank you, Mike. So item B, the probate court manning table, we have motion to support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven C, the circuit court family division wage class change, to send to the full board.
I'll make a motion to move it to the full board. Support.
We have motion in support. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Court, thank you again for your support. Thank you. Have a good night. Drive safe. Thank you.
Item seventy, first responder recruitment and training grant program application approval. This is for final action. They just need to send this grant in.
I'll make that a motion.
Support.
We have motion in support. That's just, that's not a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other judiciary public safety issues? Seeing none. Information, the animal control, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that. It's a nice little report. Shows some kind of good things. I think we're back to normal at animal control again, health-wise?
Yes. Yep, we had some staffing shortages, but everybody is back.
Good. Motion to receive and file?
Support. I'll make the motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to receive and file packets? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Environmental Public Works Committee to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Not here.
Still.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present. Seeing no additions, could I get a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Any citizens to be heard this evening? Updates, I'd like to, Mr. Wiley to come up if he could for a minute and give him an opportunity to tell us what's going on.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. I guess I'm here to kind of field some questions from you guys regarding township supervisor that was here at your last meeting. So fire away. I'm here to answer anything you have for me or.
Craig, I think you were involved. Were you involved in that?
Yeah, I was out there and, and I think, you know, they're, they have a few different questions, right? I mean, they're, they're questioning, you know, number one, how, how did it get chose to do it in the manner that it was done? And I know you and I have talked about it. And then they had concerns about the seeding and different things. And I mean, we get a couple inch rain after a fresh dug ditch and, I mean, there was, there was some issues and they were corrected. I mean, that, that's, I feel that's going to happen, but.
So.
So that, that's all, but I mean, we've got questions two times written from him and one time where he attended a meeting and to not respond at all didn't look good on our part. And I just thought if you could talk to everybody, because I'm going to have to go back and talk to them again. And.
Well, as the drain commissioner, just in the title drain commissioner, I'm supposed to work on drains. At least I thought I was. And, and I've tried to downscale these projects that when I came into office, we had over 29 petition projects, which get to be very costly, engineering costs and, and just, you know, bond costs is very expensive. So I tried to, in the 12 years I've been here, I tried to do more maintenance on the drains to keep them open and flowing. In this particular case, a couple of years ago, I went out, because we had a resident call and say they'd like to have their, their drain grubbed out, basically the brush cut back so he can see the ditch. And I personally went out there, took a look at it and saw that it had like two foot of sediment in the bottom of the ditch. And it was a four-foot ditch. So half the, the volume of the ditch has been taken up by, you know, soil. And rather than just brush hog it, I thought, let's get the excavator in there and dip it out and clean the brush all in one sweep. But to keep the cost down, we did half the drain that year and then came back the second year and did the other portion of it. Now, the individual or the township supervisor that had the problem with me, you know, he might have an axe to grind from years prior with the drain office, but I'm not going to err any laundry on his side. So regardless, he was concerned about the work that was done and took it to the DEQ who said, well, we want to know about sediment control and, and have you been seeding it? Well, we just finished. So we got back and this is on the second phase, that the, the second year we did it. So we got in there and we, you know, we did seed it. The first phase, the vegetation was looking pretty good. And so we didn't have to touch that. There was one tributary farm drain that came into the ditch, the county ditch that ended up washing out over a heavy rain. It was right after we finished it the first time. So we sent a contractor in to put matted, you know, straw mat down and seed it and then put some rock in to help armor the toe of the bank. But right after that got done, we had, I think it was like a four-inch rain in so many hours and a lot of water went through this trib again and washed it out. So the township supervisor went and looked at it and, and we, you know, he didn't like what he saw, so he called the DEQ or Eagle. And they ended up, you know, saying, we need to fix this. And we got right on it. And this time we had an engineer fix it because mother nature, you know, wiped it out. So we fixed it with more stone and, and made it a lot more stable. And we've had several rains since then that were heavy and it worked out fine. But, you know, he's got a gripe and, and he's dragging people into it to complain about it. The one farmer that was here is like a neighbor of his and I, I'm right, he sits on the planning commission for the township. But, you know, when I was out there on site with the meeting that you had attended, I talked to the farmers and they, they said, no, we don't have a problem with cleaning the ditch. I mean, that's my job. But, you know, I'm, I'm happy to listen to you commissioners. If, you know, resident has something that needs to be cleaned and you contact me, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, play with my cards face up on the table and, you know, work with you guys. I'm, I'm happy to do that. But as far as, you know, drain work in this county, I don't think there's been a drain commissioner that's cleaned more drains in the county than what I've done in the past 12 years. So if I'm doing something wrong, please let me know.
You got my ranger all full of mud that day because I got stuck.
That's right. Well, because of all the rain. So you need open ditches, right?
No, because I didn't have my seatbelt buckle.
Oh, is that what it was?
I couldn't get any RPMs.
Any other questions for that?
Yeah. I just want to say, right after we got that information from the township supervisor, I called Bob right away. He gave me all the information, all the pictures, and I thought it looked like a fantastic job. I think he's doing a fantastic job as drain throughout the whole county. On this issue, I think the supervisor is 100% wrong on it. I think he did a excellent job. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thanks for coming in.
All right. Guys, have a good night. Thank you.
Hey, Bob.
Any other updates? Or go ahead, Greg.
Why just Emmett? Are you going to let me know on Emmett?
Yes.
Okay. I gotta, I gotta go there.
No updates. Conceptual initiatives?
None.
This evening, no old business, new business. Item seven A, friends of the St. Clair River stewardship agreement for 2022, amount of $30,850. Got a motion to send it to the full board?
So moved.
Support.
Moved in support. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Rec Commission appointment to Cindy Babitz?
So moved.
Support.
Questions on the motion?
Who's, who are they replacing? Who's Dunn?
It was a vacancy.
Yeah.
For District Six and Seven.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2022-02, placing the proposed renewal to St. Clair County Parks and Rec Village on the ballot.
So moved. Send to full board?
Support.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, landfill survey rover purchase for $25,100. Item D, landfill survey Rover purchased for $25,100, I did talk to Matt today and told him I didn't think it was necessary he come, he had planned on coming, if anybody's got any questions, they said he would be glad to answer at any time, but-
Pick a good one to skip.
It's just piece of equipment they use at the landfill for their surveying, for everything they gotta do for the state, so. Do I have a motion?
Send motion, send to full board.
Support. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A, Smith's Creek landfill activities report?
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Come on, wake up, everybody. Other environmental public work matters, seeing none, information only, monthly parks and rec documents?
Motion.
Support.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Receiving file?
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dunn? Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vanenbosch. Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Here.
All right, moving on to item two, seeing no revisions, can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Have any citizens wishing to be heard? We have one, you're gonna have to fill out a card again, but- Oh, you still have to fill out a card, if you're gonna address the board and be part of the record.
You can talk, and then you'll talk, and then you fill out the card.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, but I don't have a line here. My question is just, how a citizen can get a copy of that notebook? Does that come under the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes.
Okay, so what do I need to do for us to get a copy of that notebook, and then you said that you were going to do a summary? So, our intention is to be informed, and to be good citizens, find a line, so if-
That would actually be on our agenda, so if, so that packet would be on the agenda when they-
Correct, and any summary I do is on the agenda, which is available to anyone on our website, that-
So you would be able to go to our website, you would be able to click on, they have meetings, and then they have the information that would be provided, and you would be able to actually, instead of FOIA-ing it, it's going to actually be publicly posted on the agenda, so you would be able to click on and pull it up.
I'm willing to pay whatever for a hard copy.
You just submitted an FOIA request to the FOIA coordinator for the notebook, the study materials on the-
Truthfully, it's quicker to get it off the agenda, man, by the time you go through the FOIA process and everything, I would be more-
They said it takes five days, I jumped on that.
Yep. Yep, by law, we have to respond within five days unless we request an extension.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I'd like a hard copy if I need to pay something for it, the computer doesn't work for my eyes, meetings don't work for my ears.
It probably won't be ready yet, right, Carrie?
Vicky, I'll give you my card.
Yeah, just photocopy. I can lay it down.
Yeah, put that back.
There you go. Thanks, Carrie.
Are you okay? Okay. That's okay.
Just make our photocopy, please, if you got it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll connect, and I'll make sure you get a copy of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You did your work.
Very much. Safe travels. Do we have any more citizens to be heard at this time?
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, watch that cord, there you go.
All right, moving on to four updates, I only have one. My pride of 47 years, we celebrated our anniversary two days ago.
Happy anniversary.
Congratulations.
Poor woman.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt, at times. Do we have any conceptual initiatives?
No, I'm just gonna say, I want to give this guy a ton of credit, because I've been sitting in meetings with him all day today, and him being here this evening, having to go through this, and I don't know what you did, I'm sure you did a bunch of other stuff in between, so.
How about Jay showing up at the committee meeting?
Yeah, you know. I was more, I was more impressed with Gary's performance.
I love all the love that's going around, but can we finish, or can we talk about this after?
All right, thank you, any other updates? Any conceptual initiatives?
None this evening.
No old business, we'll move to 7A, and this is, I'll let Carrie fill you in, but first off, it's the ARPA Project Commissioners Districts, and the short version is, I've received six letters, or seven letters, from the six townships and the half city of Memphis, they've had all the finances, and I did ask that this gets put on, so we can get them their game plan of when they're gonna get the money, so they include it on their fiscal year budget, because they're general law townships, which starts April 1st, so if you could add to that, Gary.
Well, I think we will have different projects, as commissioners formulate their list, they will be coming to the board, you know, for quasi-approval, I guess, you know, so then we can move forward, if some of the commissioners already have things ready to go, which some are further ahead than others, others, you know, are still looking at different things, so we, as a commissioner, you have time to do this, you don't have to spend the entire money at one time, there may be, as projects trickle in, you go, okay, you got this, 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 you know, I'm sorry, Carrie.
Jeff, you and I talked, I'm sorry, you and I talked, and every commissioner has different specifics that they have for their districts, mine is pretty much six rural districts, they work on infrastructure with Berms, Culverts, Stone, city of Memphis is gonna use the entire amount for the St. Clair County Library, so, and I want to give Carrie a thank you, she did a very nice spreadsheet, which I can present to each township, and I believe every one of us has to come to this board to get the approval to spend money, so that's why it's here, and I want to go forward, so if you'd add now, Carrie.
So as commissioners have projects that are ready, we'll bring them forward, Commissioner Beeden does have one on here, it's not her full allocation, but if stuff is ready, it can be presented to the board, and then what we'll do is, once this is approved, Commissioner Rushing, for your projects, we will send out a letter to the townships, along with the instructions on what they need to do in order to be reimbursed, and the paperwork we're gonna require, you know, as more webinars come out with these ARPA funds, there is some very strict reporting requirements, so we are gonna be asking for, you know, just copies of receipts to make sure we have everything for our reporting requirements, which I'm sure they'll all have, so as commissioners have items, if you want to either meet about it, to discuss them, or if you're ready to bring them forward, just let me know, and we'll put them on the agenda.
I guess I need a motion to send this to the full board.
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, the 2/17/2022 regular full board of commissioners meeting, meeting time changed, and this is for final action.
So, we can either meet on the 17th, pre our meeting, and the way the meetings have been going, we are going to probably need to give ourselves ample time, so we'd have to look at probably a two or three, two o'clock kind of timeframe, or you can always, I guess, look at doing something on a different day if you wanted to kick the meeting, I, it doesn't matter, I would be more comfortable to doing the meeting, because we're all coming here, and then we can go get to, you know, essentially our other meeting, so, do you think three o'clock will give us enough time?
Nope.
Or should we do two, just to be safe?
Two.
2:00 PM?
I think 2:00 PM would be better, just, I wouldn't have a 3:00 PM and have a four-hour meeting.
I'm gonna be out of town that night.
Okay. I think we can move it probably back to the board of commissioners? You think so?
Worst case, if we can't, we adjourn. It's a weird time.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of adjourning.